Is this liberty justice for all?
Good evening, all. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast over Lunenburg public access. Rule call. We are all here except for Mr. Bitner. Is there any public comment not to do with the agenda items tonight? Senior? We'll get right into it then. We've got an A and R for 171 Gilchrist Street.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, all.
For the record, Jamie Rowe, Whitman and Bingham associate, and my client this evening is Kevin Hill. I'm sure you remember the last time I was here. Mr. Costa, town attorney. And the purchase and sale agreement for the Gilchrist Street project was not signed by the town or by Mr. Hill. My form has been signed by the town and Mr. Hill, so we're able to go forward with the A and R plan. Again, I've heard that.
We have copies in the file.
Okay, perfect. I wanted to hear it from Adam. So we're here tonight asking for endorsement of this A and R plan based upon frontage lot area. We do know that there's going to be a land swap between the town of Lunenburg and Mr. Hill once the conveyances take place. We also know that this was voted in at town meeting, and that's why it's moving forward. So tonight, this evening, I would ask the planning board endorse the A and R plan.
Will we vote at the packet?
So just for clarity's sake, has this land swap taken place yet?
No.
It hasn't taken place?
No, it won't take place until the plan is endorsed, and then there's going to be a simultaneous conveyance back and forth. This is the first step, or second step, so to speak, purchase and sale, signed A and R, and then the closing will happen.
So there is a signed P and S?
There is a signed purchase and sale.
So there's a signed P and S. So the agreement is done deal, and the signed P and S directly reflects what's in the A and R?
Correct.
Okay.
One of the unique features of this A and R plan is we are deeding parcel A, 2.33 acres, to the town of Lunenburg. And then, if you remember, we went to the zoning board of appeals quite some time ago for a dimensional variation. We were trying to create a parcel of land we can deed directly to the town. That was turned down. Therefore, we're deeding to the town parcel A, 2.33 acres. The same amount of area that was contained within the original parcel that we were deeding to the town, we're going to be providing a conservation restriction on that remaining land. So conservation restriction to the town on lots 1 through 7, if it applies, and then parcel A, 2.33 acres, get deeded directly to the town itself. Parcel A, on parcel A, the Malthus Brook is on parcel A in its entirety, and the walking trail that is out there today is located within the area of conservation restriction. That'll be under the control of the town of Lunenburg. I believe it will be the Conservation Commission, but that's up to the town to decide.
So then we can expect that there will be no structures placed on that conservation restriction?
That's entirely, there will be no structures placed by my client, Kevin Hill, or any of the owners, lots 1 through 7, within the area of conservation restriction.
Okay.
Nope.
That's enforceable?
That's kind of the purpose of conservation restrictions in general. It reserves the land for the purposes outlined in the restriction.
Great. I just wanted to cover that.
And in consideration for deeding parcel A and issuing the conservation restriction, town of Lunenburg is deeding to Mr. Hill the land contained within book 516, page 105, that 20-foot strip from Gilchrist Street all the way back. I have larger copies of the plan here if you'd like to see them.
Is there a copy of the P and S needs?
There isn't. I just received it this morning. I can pass it along if you'd like to look at it.
Yes, can I see it?
There's actually two P and Ss, one for the land being purchased by Mr. Hill and one being for the land being purchased by the town. So while it's been colloquially called a land swap, it's a conveyance for...
Simultaneous.
Yes, it's a simultaneous conveyance instead of a land swap, which isn't a legal vehicle for towns to participate in.
Has town council reviewed the conservation easement?
I think that will all be part of what goes forward prior to closing.
Okay.
So I don't think closing will happen until the form of the easement for access, the easement on the trail, and the conservation restriction all meet form. Conservation restrictions, towns can have their own form in which they use them. We don't. We use the state form, which is fairly standard and fairly thorough, and the town has had success with over the years. So it will reflect that.
Do you know if Mr. Hill owns either one of the other parcels? I know we have the purchase and sale for the town parcel, but what's the status of the two other parcels involved?
So, book 4472, page 24, still owned by the Sozak family.
Okay.
Book 940, 234, between the last meeting and this meeting, Mr. Hill purchased it.
Okay. And he has a purchase and sale on the parcel that's on Sozak.
Anybody want, anybody else wants to see this?
Yeah. So, Adam, our requirement for reduced frontage, no more than two adjacent to each other, but past the front, beyond the frontage, they're allowed to speak next to each other?
Correct. It only, it requires that the frontage be no more than two next to each other separated by a full frontage lot.
At the frontage.
Correct. It doesn't specifically speak to anything as you get to the rear.
My understanding also is that the board doesn't endorse the plan, it's going to be, the signed Mylar will be held by the town planner, Adam Bernie, until the closing, what it's worth. You'd mentioned that last time.
Thank you.
And the plan has been reviewed by the zoning official, too?
Okay.
Okay, I don't have any other questions.
Good, good.
It looks like they're undetermined on the actual language of the easement, so that's what my primary concern was. But it looks like the A and R doesn't detail the restrictions on the easement. The P and S doesn't detail any restrictions on the easement.
Yes.
So I'm okay with the documentation as it stands today.
Should I take them over?
Other questions? I move that we approve the A and R as documented.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
I'll keep the Mylar, yeah. Oh, thank you.
Careful, it's still wet.
Wouldn't want to smudge it.
All right, our next appointment is for 31 School Street, a request for site plan approval waiver.
Good evening. Robert Dolittle, on behalf of, there's a letter on that, on behalf of my in-laws, short of their property, and we're requesting a waiver to the site plan review bylaw under 250 8.4. Obviously, the reason it was triggered is because of the special permit that we were granted under the center village district. Other than that, there are no, it's a single-family residence. It's new construction, but it's a single-family residence. There is no associated parking other than the minimum with a residence. There are no variances requested or anything like that. It's a fully formed A lot that was already approved by the planning board about four or five years ago. And we would have started construction earlier, other than, you know, moving my in-laws along to do this, it's taken that time. And then, in the interim, we had the district overlay, so.
Anybody have any questions?
So this is, this is in the village district, and that's why it was subject to the...
To a special permit, yes.
This is directly adjacent to the former primary school?
Yeah, I know where it is. It's right next to the...
Verizon.
Nine X Verizon building there.
So, there is a sewer there, right? Town sewer?
There is sewer in School Street. I believe it's probably 400 or 500 feet away from...
We're not, we already have a...
Septic design.
Septic approved and a, you know, site private.
So this is required because of the restriction on single-family houses in the village district?
Yeah, there was a special permit granted for the use, and 258.4 says any use that requires a special permit requires site plan approval. Where this is a minimal amount of construction and minimal amount of site plan approvable things, Mr. Dolittle has requested a waiver.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. Does anybody have questions? I move that, I move that we waive the site plan approval for the property of 31 School Street.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Senior, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, now we get to talk about pot, recreational marijuana, public discussion of cultivation.
So, I guess I'll take that from here. We started at the last meeting having a discussion about regulating non-medical adult-use marijuana. To refresh the memory of those in the audience and those at home, the planning board has taken the tact of offering a bifurcated approach where there will be the option for prohibition, both on the ballot and at annual town meeting in 2019. So what we're talking about now is not whether recreational or non-medical marijuana businesses are appropriate in town, whether it's a good thing or a bad thing, whether the town should prohibit it or not. We're looking at how we will shape, regulate, and manage marijuana businesses should they be located in town. This, what will happen is we'll have to offer two bylaws at annual town meeting. One prohibiting some or all types of marijuana businesses, one regulating marijuana businesses because the community, Lunenburg, voted yes in the 2016 referendum. We are required to achieve two steps to be able to prohibit marijuana businesses. One is a bylaw through town meeting. The second is a local ballot initiative that affirms the prohibition. So if the prohibition passes at town meeting, it would be important that the regulation also pass, so that if at the ballot the prohibition did not pass, there would be regulation in place, or else marijuana businesses would fall under the most closely associated zoning category that we have. So a retail establishment would be a retail establishment and would be allowed in all the places retail is allowed. Same thing with that cultivation would be considered agriculture, processing would probably be industrial. So we get into a situation where there's no specific legislation guiding the location of marijuana-specific businesses. It would just be whatever any business could do. So the discussion tonight isn't necessarily pro-marijuana business. It's understanding that in the case that they were to come, we'd be looking at this is how we would want to regulate them. We spoke about retail last meeting. I think the general consensus is to limit retail to two establishments, which would be about 27% of our off-premise alcohol licenses, to allow them to be zoned by special permit in the industrial zone. And there were a few other minor stipulations on spacing from residential uses and getting into hours of operation and that kind of stuff. Advertising, signage, operation, all of that is covered by the Cannabis Control Commission, is very explicitly written in their regulations and is governed by them and not by the local planning board licensing authority or otherwise. So we certainly could reiterate a lot of that, but anyone who's opposing the marijuana business would be well familiar with that because prior to them even coming to the planning board for a special permit, they would have a provisional license issued by the Cannabis Control Commission in which they would have done their background checks. They would have already known that the community could potentially permit that use, and they'd have a host community agreement signed with the community. So it's not as if someone's going to come to the community, get the special permit, be like, "Yeah, I can open my marijuana business," and then go and find out that all the things they want to do aren't going to work for a variety of reasons. They would have all of that understanding or would have been rejected from the application process. So tonight, we want to discuss cultivation, and this has been sort of a hot topic for about two years now, based on medical marijuana. We've had a few people come to town with desires or intents to cultivate marijuana for medical purposes. I believe some of them may have also been speculating about the non-medical market as it was coming forward, and those in the industry were well aware of some of the ideas and thoughts that were going into the ballot referendum. Currently, under medical marijuana, in Lunenburg, all cultivation is required to be indoors. It's required to be 500 feet from any residential property line. It's allowed in commercial and industrial districts by special permit. It's allowed in residential districts by special permit on, only on parcels that qualify for 40A protection for something other than marijuana. 40A protection is the state statute that designates zoning. In section three of 40A, there's an exemption for agricultural uses that says you can't set zoning bylaws that dictate agricultural uses under certain parameters, 2 acres and $1,000 per acre, or 5 acres of space. Marijuana has been specifically excluded from 40A section three. Hemp, which is the non-psychoactive version of marijuana, is not protected, is not excluded from 40A section three, so one could grow hemp as an agricultural product. So what that clause in our zoning says is if you are a vegetable grower and you have 100 acres, and you choose to put aside 10 acres to grow marijuana, you could do so indoors by special permit because your land qualifies for vegetables under 40A protection. If you were a homeowner who had 20 acres and didn't grow anything, you just lived there and wanted to install a marijuana cultivation facility in a residential zone, you wouldn't even be eligible to apply for a special permit. So that sort of sets the stage for where we are for medical marijuana, where we kind of are up to speed on what we're doing and what the regulations are for non-medical marijuana in the quickest way, I can say. So I guess I'll turn that over to the board or the public. I'm not sure how you want to handle that.
Sure.
That's what we're here for.
All right. If anybody would like to come up and ask, comment, concern, please feel free.
Hi, John Lebeck, 33 Lancaster Avenue. Question about the, so what you went through was the medical marijuana. Is there any distinction between medical and recreational in the 40A?
No.
No, okay.
Marijuana does not qualify as an agricultural product. It is specifically by name noted to not be considered for the 40A3 protection.
They took it out of there so they could regulate it specifically.
Okay. Yeah, because it's looking at the right-to-farm bylaw as well?
Correct.
And so that would be excluded from that?
Correct.
You wouldn't have to make any changes there?
I don't believe so.
It's exempted from the exemption.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hello. Kim Cole, 563 Mass Ave. I know that Mr. Bernie had mentioned that, you know, a lot of the stuff is covered by the Cannabis Control Commission, which I've been reading, and it is. But I also see that there are some towns that have reiterated certain things in the bylaws, so I would like to ask the board that you consider reiterating some things that I think should be important to be regulated. First is waste disposal, so I don't know a lot about this, but apparently there could be damaged or outdated product, and how that is disposed of should definitely be specific. You know, we don't want stuff just hanging around or being disposed of improperly where people can get their hands on it, be it outdated and damaged or not. And then also, they put some things on energy use and water use. They, you know, talk about high-efficiency lights, LEDs, you know, water usage to these facilities, which I think is all important, you know, for the environment. And I know they're enclosed, but, you know, so you're going to need light and water. But, you know, they kind of mandate that it should all be high efficiency with respect to that. They have, Salem has high-pressure sodium grow lights, stipulation in theirs, so that's also something. I don't know too much about grow lighting, but that might be something that, you know, you look into as, it might be a good, a good way to do it. No pesticides is also something that some towns stipulate. And then also, I don't really know how this comes into play. I didn't really have time to research it, but there was also Salem says no more than half of the plants may be mature flowering plants. I don't really know how that plays into it, but...
So the Cannabis Control Commission, when they issue a cultivation license, gives the facility a total canopy, up to 100,000 square feet, and that's the spread of the plant. So the flowering is the life cycle of the plant, and that's when they pull the product off that they sell. So I think what that is intended to do is ensure that there's multiple stages of growth occurring all at once, so they're not growing and then having this gigantic harvest and then going back and having this lull period. It creates, I think, a constant stream of employment, traffic, all those kind of things, and it gives a little bit more ability to focus on what the impact is on a consistent basis instead of, and I mean, I think we've all seen it, you know, harvest season comes and you see the farms, they get busy, and so these are going to be indoor facilities that are kind of probably going all year long in most cases. So if you have to try and figure out what their schedule is and when this road's going to be super busy because they've hired an extra 50 people to handle this as opposed to having 25 people there all the time, that would be my understanding of why they might do something like that.
Okay. And then the stuff that I had, you know, kind of mentioned earlier with the, with the retail, you know, about ventilation and security and all that, I don't want to assume, but I'm thinking that there's going to be like a general non-medical-use marijuana, like things, and then things specific to cultivation and retail and all of that. So I would assume that the security and the ventilation would be kind of number, like, apply to everything?
I think the security will apply to everything. I think the ventilation might be different depending on use. Retail is probably going to have less ventilation need than cultivation. Processing might have a different type of ventilation need, so I think that might be specific. I think, and I, you know, I've read so much about this, I don't know for sure, but I think the Cannabis Control Commission also controls some of that because they're cognizant of odors and charcoal filters and all that kind of stuff that in a cultivation facility are important. You know, I went and toured one, and in the parking lot, you couldn't smell it, but by the time you went to the front door to buzz in, you were like, "Okay, this, we're in the right place." So I don't know if they have a distance, and we could certainly probably increase that a little bit. If they're saying, you know, 10 feet from the building, we could probably say nothing outside the building, but not too much.
Okay. And the cultivation, I think, doesn't that include processing and packaging as well?
I believe it includes processing in so much as we've denoted it as agricultural processing in the medical marijuana bylaw. So it's a plant. So similar to other plants, you have to take it off of where you're growing it, and it's not ready to go. There's some preparation that needs to be done to the plant before you can package it and dry it. And so I don't think that you can process marijuana products under a cultivation license. So you couldn't, you know, you couldn't be making brownies and gummies and oils and stuff. That's the processing facility. But I think you can, you can't, you don't just cut the plant off and then ship it somewhere else for them to do the thing that they need to do to make it saleable. I think you can do that all within, that's covered under cultivation.
So it's going to be cultivated, they take it off of the plant, and then they bring it to a processing facility?
But I think, well, no, I think they can package the flowers for sale. But if you want to do anything else as far as processing goes, you know, creating other products out of it, it has to go to a processing facility.
So the retail people are getting it from the processing facilities?
No, they're getting their flowers from the cultivation facilities. So there's dry goods, which is the marijuana you see all the teenagers on TV have, and then... that is produced at the cultivation facility. So they cut it off, they cut all the leaves and stuff off, and they dry it out, and then they can package it and sell it. Or they can take it off, trim all the leaves off, and sell it to a processor who might do other things with it, make the candies and the edibles and the tinctures and the sodas.
Generally, they change the physical properties of it.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the retail people get it from...
They can get those goods from the processor.
Okay. So the cultivation can do to retailers?
Or processors, but they cannot sell to end users.
Okay.
Or the public, however.
So the description that we've got here is marijuana cultivator, an entity licensed to cultivate marijuana, process and package marijuana, transfer marijuana to other marijuana establishments, but not consumers.
Correct.
Okay. So...
That's what we've been told.
Yep. Okay. That's it? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
No. Okay.
Not a lot of discussion on cultivation, huh?
Not.
Any board discussion?
I think we proceed the same way we did with the last two uses, right? Identify the areas where...
Yeah, I think that's really where we're at. I mean, we only have one identified. We've got retail. So now it's, where do we want to allow this? How do we want to allow this? The medical marijuana statute specifically excluded, or it didn't specify, it had no language about outdoor cultivation. The non-medical marijuana statute specifically says outdoor and indoor are allowable through state law. Now, I'm not sure how much interest there would be in outdoor cultivation, but as we learned, pardon me, last winter, there's some significant potential drawbacks to outdoor cultivation. So is that something that the board would like to consider, or is it something that the board would like to just focus on indoor cultivation where people are doing this all within some form of a structure?
I think it should be restricted to indoor, eliminate the outdoor, except for personal, you know, personal growth, right? You can't, you can't stop...
Well, we're not necessarily sanctioning that, and with personal cultivation, there are rules around it.
Yeah, I'm saying, but that's separate, so we don't need to deal with that.
Correct.
I concur. I think that we should make it indoor only because I think outdoors, much harder to regulate and control. The indoor, we had, we had talked about the offsets and the distances from, from property lines and so forth. Now, you had mentioned that, that residence zoning would not allow for medical marijuana, is that what you said?
Only if the property qualifies under a 40A exemption for ag, something not marijuana.
So you gave an example of a 20-acre house lot, which I can't understand why that would not qualify for agricultural...
Because they're not producing ag. So if it was a house that's not...
So you're saying that if, if, if a person has a 40-acre lot and they want to put a growing facility on their property, and it meets all of the regulations, but they don't grow any other vegetables, it would not be allowed?
Is that right?
That's my understanding, under the medical bylaw.
Yeah, I think that's kind of a slippery slope because you get in the situation where, okay, I grow a half an acre of potatoes, I've got 38 acres of marijuana growing, like, I think for the board to try to regulate and navigate through that.
Well, again, and this is, this is what was proposed and altered at the last town meeting, so there's certainly room to further amend that, and I think that ultimately it would be intelligent to fold medical into this bylaw because ultimately the Cannabis Control Commission is going to take over medical marijuana at the state level. They're already in discussions with DPH. They have draft medical marijuana regulations out. It just hasn't happened currently. So, you know, we...
So I think instead of tying it to agriculture, I think, because it's explicitly separated, we should try to tie it by its own restrictions, either with distances and areas or even overlay districts where we say these are the areas of town where it would typically be permitted or, or some minimum lot size, and then again, offsets. But I'm not sure that we want to try to tie it in any way, shape, or form to, you have to already be growing something else in order to qualify.
I think that's completely reasonable. I would say that rather than overlay districts, that lot size and offset is probably a more manageable way to do that.
Unless there are specific areas we want to exclude.
Yeah, you have to.
Yeah.
The concern I would have with cultivation in particular is we have a lot of agriculture in town, and depending on how we develop the regulation for cultivation, lot sizes, setbacks, where we have the opportunity to increase property values for those properties astronomically and put a negative pressure on conventional agriculture because there's no crop any farmer's going to grow that will net what marijuana will net per acre. And so you look at any of the vegetable growers in town, if they're doing well and they want to purchase more land, now they're going to compete with somebody that could potentially buy that same property and outproduce them a hundredfold.
So you're looking at expansion as opposed to turnover of existing ag? Because a lot of, well, but a lot of that, a lot of ag that we have is APR. So you're right, where, because that marijuana wouldn't qualify under APR. So it's a point taken that, you know, that is a potential pitfall. So if, if you were to look at overlay districts, what, where would you look to direct it? I guess that's to everybody.
For me, I would think it's more of an industrial use case because of the type of growing facility that it is. It's not, I don't, I don't equate this to, to regular agricultural farming, like fields of hay or corn or vegetables. I think of this as a factory that's an enclosed building with air control and climate control and so forth. So I would see this more, personally, I would see this in the industrial part of town, of undeveloped industrial land that we might happen to have, where someone could build a facility that's, you know, steel structure building or whatever it would be for this purpose with trucks that can get in and out of there to pick up product and deliver goods and so forth. So I don't see this as being intermixed in residential or even in what I consider farmland in town. But that's my personal view, and if we were going to support it, that's...
I would agree.
...the way I would see it.
That's the way I would go as well.
And not, just to offer a counterpoint, and not that I necessarily think it needs to be anywhere but the industrial, oftentimes, and what I've seen from people who've come to town and talking to other, other planners, is some people are doing, like you said, you know, basically it looks like a medical building or, you know, a factory where they come and they build it, and it's all inside. And the one that I toured was in Pittsburgh. It was an old factory, and it was, you know, it looked like an old factory, and you went inside, and it was all, it was like walk-in coolers that were each, each room where they were growing things. There are some who choose to build high-tech greenhouses, which are, you know, glass, one-story greenhouse structures. Not that it necessarily would be out of place in industrial zone or, but there are a couple of different modes of doing this that are, I guess, in vogue with, with those getting into the industry. So, and I don't think that that necessarily changes the, it's an industrial-scale operation. In Devon, there's a lettuce grower who uses a similar structure. The gentleman who proposed to build one a couple of years ago here in town was looking at, I think it was 400,000 square feet of glass greenhouse. And some of the concern was they try and use as much natural light as possible, but they supplement it with these LED or other high-power lights, and they have night shades that come down over the top to prevent the glow coming out, and those shades, I guess, are sensitive and can fail, and you get this really eerie, like, purple glow that you can see for miles around.
That's a big one. Shielding is huge.
Yeah.
So it makes sense.
And again, I mean, I think that supports the industrial placement.
Yeah, absolutely.
Now, the dark sky complaints issues that we have, are they applicable to something like that?
I would expect that they would be.
They would have to be, yeah. They'd also have better infrastructure to support the business, as it, you know, and I'm sure they... Trucks, traffic, you know.
Residential areas, you know. Well, I think that the, the limitation that might come is our industrial district, or the largest of our industrial district, is not sewed or watered currently.
Right.
And I would expect a facility like this would want access to both.
Yeah.
Again, that's not necessarily your problem as far as whether it's viable. You're providing the opportunity for it to happen in a space that you deem is appropriate for town, but that, I think, would be a big draw or negative depending.
That brings up another good point, is that such as other larger residential developments and whatnot, some other larger developments, they have permitted with the caveat that they would finance infrastructure such as that. So that might actually provide added benefit by providing sewer in an area that we don't have it or water or other infrastructure. And also just to add, we did do some public outreach, and we had 132 respondents to this question about what zoning districts would be appropriate for the location of non-medical adult-use marijuana cultivation establishments. And the three highest were, first, Office Park Industrial Commercial District, and then third, the Outlying District. And the percentage of respondents were 65 almost, 58 almost, and 53%. So there's, there's that for the 132 respondents to that question.
So the Outlying District is an interesting area of discussion. There are some pretty large parcels in Outlying that could potentially be viable, but of course, they, they are adjacent to residential.
As I say, I think that the, in general, Outlying is a farm-residential district. If you look at the map, which we have up over to our left and at the audience's right, you'll see the Outlying across the northwest border, along Townsend, and then down the eastern border by Shirley, and familiarity with those areas, it's a lot of forested land. There's a fair amount of town-owned land in those areas.
A lot of conservation.
Areas, yes. And there are a few large farms and several other smaller farm-type operations in those areas. So I, again, I don't think it's uninteresting, but I think it's very similar to the type of areas that the board has sort of indicated. They'd like to avoid putting that kind of pressure on.
Yeah, I agree. I would also like to mention that if we're going to require it to be indoors, then it's not going to be able to be in the existing ground, so I'm wondering if we can regulate that it's not within the prime agricultural farming soils?
Well, if you're going to stick it in the industrial zone...
You don't have to worry about that.
I understand that, but we're talking about Outlying right now, and there's a considerable portion of that, which is prime, prime farm soil.
Yeah, I'm thinking maybe, I, I'm retracting my, I mean, I do see some large pieces, some large parcels around, but now that I think about it, we have town forest, conservation land here, and, and I do, would not want to negatively impede the, the farming areas. I was kind of thinking of in the Errol Farm area, or the old Errol Farm area, that might have been a better use for that land.
I think the other consideration for Outlying is, is as you look at it, it was mentioned earlier, the industrial zones offer infrastructure that provides access and, and movement of vehicles.
Right. You also get the trucks and so forth.
There isn't an easy way to get to any of these Outlying, and I think that's probably why it's the Outlying District.
All right, so, so my recommendation is going to stick to that, then. Let's still come up with our sizing restrictions, but I would, I would say that it would only be allowed in industrial. That would be my take on it. I don't know how the rest of the board feels or the public feels.
I agree. So if we stick indoor and industrial, do we need to get into lot sizes and so on?
I wouldn't think so.
In my mind...
You could certainly think about setbacks if you feel it's important. Some of those industrial districts do about residential areas. Again...
I noticed you guys mentioned that on setbacks, you were thinking door-to-door as opposed to edge-to-edge?
That was my comment, because of traffic and employees and materials, because there's going to be such large buildings, there's probably going to be large, long, very large walls that don't have openings.
So that would mean that the corner of that building could go right to my backyard?
Well, it's got to conform to the, to the lot line setback and whatnot.
I believe it was, was it door-to-door or building-to-building?
It was door-to-door.
Well, that was my suggestion, door-to-door. I think it ended up being building-to-building.
I think, I think I inferred it as building-to-building.
Okay. I think the minute said door-to-door, that's why I was assuming that that's what you decided.
You know, I think that, again, the medical cultivation is 500 feet from a residential property. You know, that certainly could continue. As I said, I was, you know, I was, I had to be five feet away from the door before I could smell anything at the facility I went to in Pittsburgh. There were residences directly across the street. There were other businesses in the area. You know, it's obviously a much more urban, much denser environment, but it certainly didn't seem to be like it was a beacon of flashing, hey, this is what they're doing here. Even pulling into the parking lot, I was kind of like, am I in the right place? And so I don't know that with indoor, there's as much potential impact. 500 feet is fairly large, and I think it was building to residential property line in the medical, so I don't know if you want to continue that, if you want to look at amending all of that with indoor cultivation or not.
Yeah, I think building to property line is better, in my opinion, than building to building, but, I mean, the rest of the board talked about it when I wasn't here, so...
And I'll just mention that 500 feet is about a tenth of a mile.
Yeah. And how would that function in the industrial district? Do we have parcels big enough to meet a 500-foot setback?
Yeah. I was going to ask that.
We do.
The quarries.
I mean, if you look...
I'm not sure over by south. I mean, you're probably not going to have it over by the Whalen area, but...
No, I, I think that, because the large industrial parcel over there is owned by MBTA, and the other, I think, bleeds mostly into Pittsburgh. If you look down on Lemmon Street Shirley Road, there are plenty of parcels that could make that on the south side of Lemmon Street Shirley Road.
But if you need a 500-foot setback, that means you're, you have to have 1,000 feet of frontage?
No, from a residential property. Not, not from a, not from an adjoining property. So it would just be, you'd be affected by the, the RB district that comes up on the back end of the industrial.
Okay.
So if you were, say, on... So, if you were, say, on the furthest southwest parcel, you're thousands of feet from industrial zone, or from a residential zone.
Well, depending on Lancaster and Shirley, and that would count too, right?
Does it? No, not for us.
No? I mean, a residential use is a residential use, doesn't make much difference what town it's in, does it?
I guess that's an argument you could make at that point.
Yeah.
It's a good question.
I mean, we could.
You can't really regulate what your neighboring town does.
No, but I mean, it'd be interesting to see what the zoning is in each abutting town. I mean, if they've got.
Worth looking at.
Yeah. I mean, we want to protect our citizens, and there's no sense in.
And I guess the crux of that would be if they found, if I was living in Lancaster and I found out you had this setback, and I was like, well, I don't want marijuana near Lancaster, let's go to town meeting and petition to change it to residential and kill their ability to use that zone too. So, I guess it could stand up, it's probably something that should be looked at and thought about.
Well, what about a notification?
If only we had a lawyer in the audience.
That does cross, it does cross communities.
Right. So, if it was in that corner, then there would be Lancaster and Shirley people notify.
Correct.
Presuming there are abutters within the district.
300 feet of the property line.
Of the property line that's in Lunenburg.
Correct.
Because some of these properties also go into Lancaster, and they have that use in Lancaster as well.
For a special permit, it's 300 foot of abutters to a abutters, right? So, it's a abutters to a abutters. So, we seem to have shifted gears a little bit from the last time we invited the public to speak.
Did we?
A little bit different, I mean, we're talking about location rather than regulation.
Well, location is regulation.
Regulating location in general.
The last one was our first attempt, so we're kind of getting.
Sure.
Well, I also think that retail compared to cultivation have very drastic ways that they impact the community. Cultivation, I'm not going to say it's harmless and doesn't have any impact, but it's kind of the difference between a widget shop and a convenience store. You know, convenience store brings traffic, visibility, people, movement, product, funds that are going back and forth. The widget shop is generally closed, I mean, there's security concerns, obviously, and all of that, but the public traffic to and from is minimal, if at all, and they're not, in most cases, going to be advertising what they are or what they're doing. I worked in a community that had a pharmaceutical manufacturer, and unless you knew what it was, you just drove by and like, they're doing something industrial there, no one knows what, because it was just a nondescript building, which, you know, I.
I imagine you don't want to invite.
Correct, you don't want to invite the public's gaze.
No, you don't want the attention.
And, again, not that there aren't things that can be regulated or should be regulated, but I think that with retail, it's a much more visible and visceral reaction with what's happening, because it's sort of the front that everybody sees.
And even that, I would think you'd regulate by where it would be allowed, too, so.
There are things that, you know, there are, I was looking at Brookline, and they were talking about volatiles in the process of growing, processing, you know, flashpoints and things like that of different chemicals you don't want to use, that kind of stuff, but we got to kind of get into it with fire and police to get to those sort of regulations, you know.
The ones that Mrs. Cole was talking about, water use, whether or not they're going to be using any kind of fertilizers.
So, I would think that the chemical usage on the cultivation would be probably less or equals or more than the processing? I would think it would be less, I mean, other than fertilizer.
I don't know, I'm neither a farmer nor a processor, but I know that my understanding of, you know, some of the processing, obviously, if you're making foods with it, it's probably not chemically, because you're going to feed it to someone, so it's going to be, you know, a food-type product. And I know that the way that they do extractions for oils and stuff like that is, I think there's a butane and a CO2-type extraction where they pump it full of gas and they do something like smushing it, I don't fully understand it, but it, so I think that there are some volatiles that get used in the processing of it. And I would imagine that if you're forcing a plant to grow in a fixed period of time in the way that you want it, you're probably pumping a fair amount of fertilizer in there, which has its own secondary set of issues. I know that when the gentleman was proposing the facility, he and I had spoke on several occasions, and we were talking about waste disposal, and I had spoken to some people, and many communities require a grease trap of sorts in the sewer line for facilities like this, because when they discharge their effluent, there's sometimes leftover THC or other fertilizer products in there that are not water soluble, and they're fat soluble, so they float to the top of the water, and the grease trap, similar to like a kitchen grease trap.
Sure.
For a restaurant captures that, and they have to actually call Clean Harbors to come and take it out and take it away, because it's not something you can just easily dispose of. Or some other Clean Harbors-type establishment.
He also talked about, you know, not using excess or supplemental oxygen and other.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I don't know if we want to talk about those things, or just sort of, have you cut and paste?
We certainly can cut and paste them, if you have certain things that you want to talk about, if you'd prefer me to take that example and speak to the fire chief and the police chief and see what they're, I mean, I think with the volatiles and stuff, we're pretty much into fire and maybe Board of Health.
Yep.
I think the police chief is probably going to be most interested in the security planning, which is highly regulated by the state, that he would then, you know, in our current medical bylaw, he's required to sign off on.
Supplemental carbon dioxide, actually, which makes sense.
And I would imagine you'd want to carry that over.
Yep.
All right, has any of this discussion prompted any more questions or comments from the public?
Christine Folds, 24 Lancaster Avenue, I wanted to find out if you had a large parcel of land that you had in forestry, why couldn't you build your own facilities upon that as long as it wasn't reaching to any other type of structure or any other dwelling or the property lines? Because that's going to be also something that's going to come up, and not just in the industrial areas, if you're going to have a smaller facility, not a mega facility, there are people that are going to want to try to do something like that also possibly in this community. So, I wanted to find out if you couldn't take some of that into your plans now versus later coming up in front of you. Again, if you couldn't say that in a certain area, you could have a certain-sized building, not a 10,000-square-foot or whatever the building is, that you could have a limitation of building size to property size, because some people do have properties that are, you know, 30-plus acres, that might want to build and take 10 acres out of their forestry and build in some type of facility that is there, but not build a mega, because everything you're talking about is like these mega things that are not necessarily what we will see, and it might be something that we want to have smaller facilities come into this community, because also the tax money could be very good to the community. But I think we should take into consideration some of the parcels of land and not just have it curtaigned to one area, because we will end up having to have that discussion later on if we don't think about it now.
I have a question for that comment. Are you talking about the 61 forestry program?
Yeah.
Okay, that's taxation, and I think that the exemption applies to the 40.
I think it's the 40 that I'm talking about, like, if you have 40, 40, I'm not sure what the numbers are.
So, 40, section 40 is for zoning, and section 61 is taxation.
I think it's for zoning that I'm talking about.
So, the zoning exemption is for agricultural only, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, I don't believe it's for forestry.
It's not, it's for agricultural only.
But, so, for example, if you have something in forestry and you wanted to put it into agriculture, you could, I mean, that might be something that comes up if you have a large parcel of land.
Could be.
So, I think we should take into consideration for the community, people that do have properties that are larger, that might want to build their own facilities for doing this kind of thing.
And are you talking for commercial production or for personal production?
No, for commercial, a small commercial production. I'm not talking about these mega commercial projects, but there are some, you could have a building that's smaller than this, you know, half the size of the footprint of this building, and still have a really nice, small facility that you could build that has to be kept up to the standards that the state has set and that medical also sets, because all recreational marijuana will also be set to standards that will probably, should adhere to the medical standards, too. And by the way, most people that would grow in that type of smaller situation will be using organic products, because a lot of it will be used for food and for body salves and things like that that will help people medically that don't have medical cards.
So, let's introduce the concept of regulate based on size of the actual facility.
You still have the restrictions on ag, it's outside of ag, so you'd have to, if your property were pulled out of all chapter, right, protection, then you could do it.
Well, forestry is, I mean, that's all, that's taxation, the 61 stuff.
Yeah. So, they'd have to pull it out of forestry in order to build the structure.
Correct.
Anyway.
Yeah, that would have to be without, you know, and it'd also have to be rezoned, but it's going to be a situation, there are some people that have larger properties that would want to possibly build a smaller facility, not one of the major humongous, you know, 20,000 or 10,000 square feet.
Well, the license tiers start at up to 5,000 square feet of canopy, and they go up to 100,000 square feet.
So, 5,000 is the minimum?
Up to 5,000.
Up to.
So, I guess in theory, you could have 200 square feet of canopy.
Can we regulate, can we regulate down below the 5,000? So, if you get a license from the state that says up to 5,000, and we say it can only be, you know, 500, is, can we do that?
I think what you could do is say that tier-one cultivators, up to 5,000 square feet, can be located in X number of zone under certain conditions, all other cultivators need to be in the industrial zone. Is that something that, and that's kind of the direction that I would go, is putting some condition on the level of cultivation?
Yeah, you'd have the minimum acreage or something, right, to begin with.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So, you could do that. I haven't seen too many communities address the tiers in zoning, although there's nothing that prohibits it. The tiers exist for licensing purposes under the state statute and the state regulations. So, you're sort of taking a licensing concept and you're working it into your zoning regulation. Again, there's nothing that prohibits it. I think to some extent, it maybe unnecessarily complicates it. If your concern is with too large a facility in a district that's not, that's more of a residential district than a non-commercial district, you could simply place a restriction on the size of the facility, no more than X,000 square feet. I will say that certainly the regulations are tailored more toward the larger facilities. I haven't seen too many smaller facilities, I think because at least at present, the cost and expense of constructing the facility and the equipment is so high that you need a certain amount of canopy to sort of recoup that cost. So, we've seen small facilities in communities that are 10, 20, 30,000 square feet, and that's what many applicants are considering to be small facilities with potential future expansion. We've got a project in one community that's 100,000-square-foot warehouse facility, they're only seeking permission for 30,000 square feet to start, but they've got a potential 70,000-square-foot expansion on hand. So, certainly nothing would prevent that if you want to regulate it differently. You could really have, you know, full discretion to regulate where these go and how they're restricted district to district, so long as what you do does not amount to a de facto prohibition. That's the only time that you run afoul of the regulations unless you opt for the referendum vote.
Thank you.
So, just stick directly to up to size of X square feet, like you said.
Now, do you want to allow facilities less than 2,000 square feet in residential zones on parcels greater than?
Maybe we set it by.
Next acres?
Maybe we set it by zone. I think the acreage restriction is going to be dictated by the distances anyway, right? So, if you have to maintain 500 feet from any residential property line, then you're, there's only, I mean, what are you talking about, like, four acre minimum, I would think, before you could put a little building in the middle of it and meet the requirement, right? So, we're automatically regulating it based on size from that perspective, just by having the offsets. What we could do is identify those sizes, where we say, you know, up to X number of feet in residential A, up to X number of feet in residential B, up to X number of feet in Outlying, and then also for commercial. So, we could, we could set that sizing, I'm just saying this as an option, not that we have to do this, but we set that sizing restriction based upon the zoning.
I would recommend against cultivating in commercial zones for a variety of reasons, but to leave commercial zones for commerce, and in an area that serves the public in ways other than a, you know, a silent walled facility.
Yeah, and maybe through discussion, we say, hey, residential A and B are out as well.
Yeah.
And this is really just going to wind up in Outlying and industrial, you know.
Yeah, through the chair, what's the, do you have the survey results for?
Outlying was the third highest one.
Yeah, where was residential on that? Somewhere down?
A and B were pretty much tied with recreation and Whalen overlay at the minimums.
Okay.
They were all pretty much even.
Yeah, so, sorry.
Katie Adams, Williams Drive. First, I like to always, I didn't do this one time, say I support prohibition, so when I talk about it, it's nice just to say that that would be the simplest way to handle this. But I liked when you were talking, Mr. Chenness, about the industrial areas, because when you really listen to somebody describe these facilities in depth, they're certainly not agriculture, farming, there's lots of light pollution and all sorts of things, more of what we'd think of as a factory. But then, when it comes to these, this idea of trying to find a way to allow smaller facilities in places, I'm thinking, if we're going to allow random marijuana facilities, then why not allow all sorts of different random facilities, right? Because I'm thinking, well, maybe I'll get a piece of land and then put some facility in the middle of it and start some sort of business. So, I don't want to see marijuana get some sort of opportunity that wouldn't be applied to something that would be much nicer, in my opinion. I mean, let me think of, maybe I'll, you know, make an ornament factory and, you know, get five acres and have a facility in the middle where I start manufacturing something randomly in my residential neighborhood. So, I feel like it gets super vague when, why would we allow random industrial-like marijuana facilities to pop up in a forest when we don't like anything in a forest? So, prohibition. And no small facilities in random places. I think then you really got to start allowing that concept to apply to so many other things other than marijuana, so.
Thank you. Now, are we going, we're not going to have a separate session about the craft marijuana cooperative?
We are.
We are, okay.
Because they, they're this unique concept.
Good.
Where their cultivation. where they're cultivation and processing. And when I say processing, like, actual processing, not just trimming plants. And they're restricted to Massachusetts residents as the shareholders.
Okay. And they require an LLC. So we are going to have a separate discussion?
Correct. We have that scheduled, I think, sometime in December.
So then getting back to the size, the tiers of marijuana cultivator, there are eleven different tiers, from five thousand to ten thousand to twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, so they go in increments of ten thousand square feet. So as Town Council's example, I think he said something like twenty or thirty thousand square feet with an expansion up to seventy more, which would require different tiers?
Correct. And the way licensing works is you apply for a license for the size canopy that you want. You need to sell a minimum, I believe it's seventy percent of the product produced in a calendar year. If you produce, if you sell more than eighty-five percent of your produced product, you can apply for a license upgrade. So what I think they're trying to avoid is someone getting a hundred thousand square foot license going and putting all these plants in and growing all this stuff and selling fifteen thousand square feet worth of product, or, you know, selling fifty percent of the product they produce and just having all of this product sitting around that's either going to waste or then it's being dumped, essentially. So they're looking at finding a sweet spot where people are actually growing what they're selling and they're not just producing, producing, producing. So that there's some balance between the economy of it and the actual production of it.
And just to follow, you were correct about the eighty-five percent. If it's, if it has sold eighty-five percent of its product consistently over the six months preceding, it may apply for an expanded production. But if the commission may, and the commission may reduce, which is the CCC, right? Okay, so, may reduce the licensee's maximum canopy if, to a lower tier, if the licensee sold less than seventy percent of what is produced.
Almost like I know what I'm talking about.
Almost. Well, it wasn't a minimum of seventy. It was, it may be reduced if it's less than seventy.
Maintain the status. Okay.
So I think we focus on the industrial areas. I'd be opposed to, like, allowing small cultivations. I just, I feel like that opens up a whole nother can of worms. It gets into the multiple use thing where, you know, if somebody wanted to have an auto repair facility in their backyard, you wouldn't allow them to build a structure to do that because the primary use is a single-family use. And now you're putting a commercial use with a residential use in a residential district. It's a slippery slope in my mind.
But we do allow that for some uses, right?
Solar.
Well, no, no, not solar. No, but I mean, like, you can have a sole proprietorship of your house. We do allow that.
Yeah, but it's very limited.
Right, right, but you could restrict it the same way. You could say that it's a sole proprietorship. You can't have any employees, can't be more than a thousand or X number of square feet. So it really becomes like a boutique self-business.
My concern would be security and all that.
Right, now, it still has to comply with all the regulations.
It does get licensed.
I agree. I don't think that it'd be worth it, because by the time you buy the license, get all the approvals, and build a facility that's going to meet all the requirements, I don't think it would be viable to do that. So maybe regulating it so that you, we can allow it is kind of silly, seeing how it couldn't actually be done.
At this point, maybe that is a discussion for the future, when costs come down.
Because when you think about these things, because of all the security and so forth, they really are like little factory-type places. And, you know, I was thinking in my mind before, like, the greenhouse, like a modified greenhouse. But it has to be a pretty doggone secure greenhouse.
It does, and usually those places end up with some sort of permit or fence and a variety of other things. And there's nothing that would prevent an adult from growing six plants at their home or an adult that lives with other adults growing twelve plants. And, I mean, the only caveat is you can't sell those products. You can, if it's really boutique and you're, you know, you're really, you just dig doing it, you can produce it and give it away. I don't know what the implications or requirements would be for things like creams or other, you know, bodywork items that the previous speaker had mentioned, but, you know, you can do that by right without any necessity of any license.
Right.
I'm not necessarily sure that's true.
You can grow up to twelve plants with two adults.
Right, right, but you can't make creams out of it and then sell it to the general.
No, you can't sell it. You could certainly make all the cream that you want with whatever product you produce.
Okay. I don't think that would be the intent. I think the intent would be to be able to sell it.
Well, and I agree, that's what I'm.
A lot of drug dealers out there are going to be awfully disappointed.
So this public discussion is, is there any further public comment, questions, concerns, discussions?
Do you have good input?
Yeah, I think so.
This is Brookline.
Yes.
And I got a couple others that I'll email you the town.
Didn't I send you guys Brookline?
Oh, did you send it?
Oh, okay.
I think you gave us three, North Hampton, Brookline, and Deerfield.
Deerfield, yeah.
Yeah, there was a couple of it. There's Salem, I think it's one.
Yeah, I've heard Salem mentioned several times, and I think Cambridge has a pretty robust.
Yeah, very robust.
Okay. All right, I think we're good on this?
Let's move on.
All right, no further public comment? Excellent. So our next item is Settlers Solar, nine-nine-four North Field Road. Board deliberations and vote. Plan endorsement if approved. So we've had draft decision.
Yes.
In our packets.
Yes.
So I have a question about the draft decision. In light of the news I received when I got here this evening, the draft decision is structured with Mr. Bitner listed in some key positions. So do we just amend this, or what happens with regards to that whole situation?
It would probably need to be amended.
And is there any kind of, is there anything that has to be done officially with resignation, or?
Oh, it's already been filed with the town.
So it's all official, okay.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes.
There was one item that I seem to see was lacking in the conditions. And shame on me, I don't think that I mentioned it at our last meeting, and I don't think I've mentioned it to Town Council, but there's nothing on here about a pre-construction meeting. Oftentimes, with projects of this size, we will do a pre-construction meeting and just make sure that, you know, a week or fourteen days prior to the commencement of construction, the applicant, the town are on the same page as far as hours of operation. Again, what path trucks may take in and out of the facility. With this, they'll, you know, they have logging that they'll be doing. They'll probably be getting some sort of landing zone. It's not a huge endeavor. It's usually, you know, it would be people like myself, the DPW director, the police chief, and the contractor, the property owner, just kind of meeting on site and saying, here's kind of where we're coming in, here's how the trucks are going to go, and just making sure that there aren't any operational issues that could cause a problem either for the community or for the applicant. It's really just making sure we're all going in the same direction as they start their approved construction.
Now, didn't they show, like, construction and all that?
I believe that there was a construction shown on there. I believe it goes to the west of the clubhouse and between the two repair or storage facilities.
And our standard conditions are that it be constructed per the approved plan sets, right?
That's correct. Again, with a smaller facility, that's generally less of an issue, or a facility that's on a major road. And again, I don't think that this is anything that would prevent them from moving forward in a reasonable way. It's really just to make sure that everybody's aware of what's happening. People often call the police if there are large trucks that are constantly traversing some of these back roads. It lets everyone know what's happening. And, you know, police, specifically, police and fire can be aware of the things that they may receive calls about or may need to respond to at some point.
I'm sorry, are you suggesting that you have a pre-construction meeting with them?
Correct.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay. And you want to include that as a condition?
I would think that it would be important to include it as a condition.
Condition twenty, pre-construction meeting with land use director, DPW, chief of police to review and agree on construction details?
Yeah.
Fair enough?
I assume that this is something that the applicant has done in other communities.
Anybody have a problem with that?
I have no problem with that whatsoever.
Makes sense to me.
Was there any other inputs that people then?
I want to clarify what your question was at the beginning, something about the chair, this specific.
Yeah, well, there's lots of references to the chair in here. So I guess the amendment would just remove the references? I presume.
Are you just talking about the signatures?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, any participation he had in the meeting, he had in the meeting, so those would remain. He certainly wouldn't be the signator on the second to last page there, certifying that the board's action was the action.
So who would they?
I think that would fall to the vice chair.
Restructure, it's going to be the vice chair.
And I think that one other thing that I forgot to mention, Mr. Chair, is on page eight, the property is referred to as nine forty-four North Field. I apologize, I meant to note that to Attorney Costa earlier today.
All right, well, if there's, if there's no other input, then I'd make a motion to grant the special permit with the general specific conditions noted below, including the following amendments, adding twenty, pre-conditioned meeting with land use director, DPW, and chief of police to review and agree on construction details.
Pre-construction and fire?
It's a pre-construction meeting with the land use director, DPW, chief of police to review and agree on construction.
Land chief.
And fire chief. And fire chief to review and agree on construction details. And just modify the motions and conditions and agreement documents to remove the references for Greg Bitner for signature and approvals. And that would be the motion.
So it's a motion to amend the document?
It's a motion to approve.
It's a motion to approve with amendments.
As included with those amendments.
Correct.
The amendments.
Correct.
So he's motioning that the conditions included in the draft decision.
And that.
And those amendments to the draft decision.
Okay.
Yep. That's the motion on the floor.
I have a point of order at some point.
I think the hearing is closed.
The public hearing is closed.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, so the hearing is closed. Certainly, there can't be any substantive comment. If there is a question or a point of order, that's generally left to the discretion of the chair. I would recommend, and I wouldn't typically overstep and even say this, but given the procedural posture of this case and the fact that we're here on remand, if there's a point of order and it's nothing that's new or of substance, and it's a question regarding clarification of the decision or something that could potentially result in relitigating what could be an approval, I would suggest that the chair allow the point of order. But certainly, there can be nothing substantive added.
Is that in fact the case?
There is no new substance. I'm seeking a clarification of the motion that I've just heard.
Okay. I'm okay with that.
I have no objection to that, but I defer to you.
Sure.
Is the board intending to address the stormwater permit?
The stormwater permit is a separate permit. I think that the hearing was closed, so there would be a second motion on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, there's the standing motion.
But what happens if we don't get a second?
Try again?
Further deliberation?
Is there, is there something about the motion I made that is preventing a second from the other board members?
I'm a stubborn bastard, that's why.
I completely understand. I just, is there a way I could amend my motion to gain a second?
Don't look at me. I'm glad I'm chair now.
All right, so what is, what do I do in this case?
Well, the motion fails for, fails for lack of a second. The chair can entertain a different motion. You need to take action on the application that's before you. I'll remind you just again, in terms of procedural posture. So this is a case that was originally, a project that was originally denied, both a special permit and site plan approval by a four-to-one vote. Litigation ensued, settlement negotiations were had, the matter was remanded to the board. It requires a supermajority vote for approval of the special permit, a simple majority vote for approval of the site plan. That's what's before you. You've got a five-member board, but you currently only have four members. So you need all four to support the approval. If the board opts not to support the approval, the applicant will have two choices. The first would be to accept what would be an effective denial of this iteration of the project and appeal that and fight that version of the project, or to go back to the last round with all of the goodies off the table, arguably, and continue on with the litigation that was a year or so in when we remanded it to the board.
So I will retract my motion to allow another board member to make an alternate motion.
I can't make a motion.
Gentlemen?
We have to make some kind of decision, so you have to make a motion. It can be a positive or a negative motion, but.
Or we can deliberate, correct.
Yes, and continue deliberation.
Yeah. I mean, the part of this project that I struggle with as an individual is we heard a lot of input from the neighbors. They were really concerned about the aesthetics, that being a scenic road. And while I sympathize with the property owner, and they have their rights to develop the property in the way they see fit, I can also sympathize with the abutters. And in this particular situation, the two-hundred-foot setback that's stipulated in the bylaw is being, isn't being met. I mean, it's basically being substituted with a tree fund and some other, yeah, yeah. The two-hundred-foot buffer. And so that puts us in a difficult position, in my view, because we can only vote on what's presented to us. You know, the applicant has made reasonable concessions, but still, we're waiving the two-hundred-foot. So I'd feel differently if there wasn't so much land involved. I feel like, you know, if you have a really large parcel like this, it's pretty easy to come up with the extra fifty feet. It means a smaller facility, but it's still economically viable in my mind. But in all other regards, I think they've met the bylaw and, you know, there's no other reason I can think of, but that's a tripping point for me individually. So throughout the process.
So, throughout the process, we've been working back and forth with the applicant to push, you know, this distance and that distance and try to rearrange it the best that we could. Is there some specific distance that we can change? Some specific buffer we can increase? Some physical thing, change that we can make?
I'm sorry, I don't think we... I think we're only at conditions right now, right?
Yes, but we can condition things like setbacks. The question becomes, will they fight it on that condition?
Yeah, and that's where...
Or will they go back to square one?
Yeah, and that's where it could be. Again, I sympathize with the property owner and the applicant because it's their property, they should be able to use it as they see fit. But we have bylaws for a reason. And I feel like if we continue to make exceptions, then what good is the bylaw if you're never going to enforce the bylaw, if you're always going to be making exceptions? So, I see both sides of it, but personally, that's what I struggle with, is when you have a 34-acre or 28-acre, whatever the total footprint is, and you're arguing over the 50 feet here, 25 feet there, I can see where an abutter would see that as disrespectful.
Yeah, absolutely. So...
And I think that's what works.
I know why I'm hung up. But...
Why are you hung up?
Because I'm a jerk. So, what... Is there nothing, no way that you can see creating a condition that would make this palatable?
I don't know.
Structurally, I don't see a problem with it unless we... I mean, but there is the...
No, as I said, I think they...
Western border.
Yeah.
If you push the paneling back and say, "Well, just don't touch the buffer, you can't cut the trees," you know what I mean, something like that, then I think that the neighbors have said that would be sufficient for them.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, we can't... I realize we can't leave it in limbo forever, you know what I mean? We can't just sit and...
No, we need to act on it.
Do something, so...
Take a vote.
Yeah, it's gotta be a yes or no, right? So, I don't know. What do you think of that? What does anybody think about that? Creating a condition that, you know, just pushes it back or, you know, changes the buffering on the western side so that, in other words, just keep the buffer maximized and don't cut any trees? And they'll be, you know, I understand it will force a change on their part to get the shadowing clearances that they need and stuff, but... And then, what you're doing is, if you do that, you run the risk that they're going to go back to court, either with the original or with the... Just on that condition.
The best thing I have to say right now is I'm reluctant to condition something like that, but it doesn't really seem to me like a condition...
It'd be a lot easier if it was in the plan.
It's within our purview to change the buffer.
No doubt.
To change the buffer.
We were there. I understand, I mean...
Any other suggestions to get us out of a stalemate, just to get us moving?
I would defer to counsel. Have you heard anything that you can speak to?
Not necessarily. You're continuing on with deliberations of the substance of the plan, which is certainly within the scope of what you've got on the agenda tonight. You don't need to accept the conditions that are before you. You can reject them, you can modify them, you can add new conditions. I think that, you know, we've... It's been sort of a long road a ho here, so I think you know what we're dealing with in terms of what the applicant originally proposed, what has now been proposed, and the representations that have been proposed, what the applicant can or can't do, or maybe the way that you view it is willing or is unwilling to do. I think we've heard it said expressly at more than one meeting that their project is not viable, from their perspective, at less than 5.8 megawatts. And so, they have said that they will not reduce it. They have said that they will not increase the buffers because they can't without a loss of panels and therefore a loss of capacity. So, I suspect, just based upon those representations, that if you were to condition the project by increasing the buffers, that would result in two things. Number one, a redesign of the project, which will involve some cost. And number two, at least to the extent that their representations are truthful, it would result in a loss of capacity, which they've said they are either unable or unwilling to do. So, my sense would be that we'll end up back in court. What occurs through the court process from this point forward, who knows? Is there an ability to further negotiate? I don't know, but we have negotiated for a fair time already. And at some point, I imagine the applicant's going to say enough is enough, we're going to take our chances in the litigation. I'm uncomfortable, and it wouldn't really be appropriate for me to talk about, although I think you know, because we've talked about it in many an executive session, strengths versus weaknesses, pros and cons of litigating versus resolving the case through settlement or through remand, and I won't speak to that anymore because we're not in an executive session tonight. But you know what's at stake here. You know the challenges that were raised by the applicant to the first decision. I suspect you would get similar challenges with respect to any new decision that issues that is not an approval with conditions, or that is an approval with conditions that, from their perspective, render the project unbuildable or undevelopable. And they would be challenging everything from the substance of the decision, whether that decision was within your purview or within your discretion in light of the bylaw that's in effect. But they would also be challenging the bylaw itself, based upon citations to case law, based upon the protections available by statute in Massachusetts for these sorts of facilities, and based upon different guidance that's been given from time to time by the Attorney General's office. So, those are, again, I'm not telling you anything you don't know or the public doesn't know or couldn't know, because those are the challenges they raised in the first round of litigation that resulted in the remand. So, I think you need to keep all of that in mind. But I understand you've got a project before you, and I think that all you can do now is either choose to vote it with the conditions that have been proposed, vote it with those conditions modified or amended or augmented based upon the discussion that you've just had, or further discussion that might ensue, or there could be an alternate motion that would be a motion to deny the project. If that were to be the case, then you would either continue deliberations, or you just move to deny on the basis of whatever gets discussed has the grounds for that denial, and I'd have to prepare a different decision because you don't have a denial decision before you.
Right. All right, so based on that input, the one question that came out of that in my mind was, is could we condition it upon a third-party appraisal to their statements that it would not be viable for less than 5.8 megawatts?
The challenge that I have with that, respectfully, is that there's no economic standard, nor could there be, in your bylaw. I understand, and this issue is raised frequently in other contexts, and sometimes legitimately so. So, in the affordable housing context, the question is often asked, is it viable to build a smaller project? Because developers will come in with projects that are much more dense than the surrounding neighborhood, and under Chapter 40B, economic viability is a standard, and boards have the ability to question the economic viability to conditions projects on reducing density. And if the applicant says, "No, I won't reduce the density," you can say, "Prove it. Submit a pro forma to me, allow us to have it reviewed by a third party to verify that you can't build at a lesser density, you can't comply with the conditions we're imposing." In other contexts, under Chapter 40A, the zoning act outside of 40B and affordable housing, you don't generally have that discretion, and you certainly don't with respect to uses that are deemed either fully or partially zoning exempt, like solar facilities. So, you have criteria in your bylaw, which we've walked through, we walked through them with the denial, we've walked through them again with the approval. Those are what you need to focus on. And if you can determine that those conditions, those requirements, those standards are satisfied, even if you believe that it means that the applicant is going to make a windfall profit, you have no basis for denying it. Conversely, if you think that a project may not be economically viable, or may be marginally economically viable, but it doesn't meet any of the conditions, you can deny it, even if it wouldn't result in a windfall to the applicant if it's not satisfying the conditions of the bylaw. So, you really have to focus in on those standards and not on economic viability. And I understand that it sort of sounds like we're talking in circles here, because the basis for why they can't increase the setbacks is they're saying that the project is not viable at a lesser size. But your focus needs to be less on the economic viability and more on the standards, more on the setback requirements or buffer requirements, and, you know, whether or not you believe that that is a substantial enough detriment that it runs afoul of the bylaw requirements and therefore justifies denial of the project. Again, balancing what the counterarguments are going to be on appeal, some of which you already know.
All right.
Big help, right?
All right, is there any more... Did that change any stances? We need to do something.
Yeah, would a vote on a denial change the way that you see it?
Why is everybody looking at me? I'm looking at everybody.
Just trying to get, you know, I understand what you're saying, and I actually agree with you, but where do we go with that?
No, it's definitely a difficult decision to make because, you know, if we go down the road and deny the project, then it goes back to litigation. And in a lot of ways, in the interest of protecting the abutters, you could do harm in that it goes back to the original plan and no tree fund and fewer setbacks and so on, so tough call.
So, do we... I mean, I can take the amendment and second it, and we can just have it up and down and see what happens.
There you go. Would you like to make your amendment, I mean, your motion again?
You want me to re-motion the same motion that didn't get seconded?
Would you because the didn't pass? Please.
All right, I will re-motion my original motion to grant the special permit with the general and specific conditions noted below in the document with the following amendments, add 20, a pre-construction meeting with the land use director, DPW, chief of police, and fire, chief of the fire department, to review and agree on the construction details and the removal of the signatory references to Mr. Bittner.
Second.
Site plan approval.
Oh.
Sorry. Special permit and site plan approval.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, if I could recommend, to the extent that you're going to take those votes, that they be taken separately, because they require different quantums of votes, so you could re-amend your motion to just be special permit, and then we can defer back to that.
I un-amend my vote to, as requested, and it'll just be the motion to grant the special permit.
And I... Now I re-second.
All right, moved and seconded.
Discussion.
Discussion.
So, we have a separation of special permit and site plan approval.
As has historically been done, it's my understanding anyway, I haven't been here for years, but in my short time, is that your special permit and site plan approval decisions are often combined when you combine the hearings. Otherwise, you'd be reiterating all that occurs at each of the hearings in terms of discussion. I've got separate votes at the end of the decision. The reason I suggested that the motions be made separately is for the reason I stated before, that the special permit requires, in the case of a four-member board, a unanimous vote, whereas the site plan approval could occur by way of a three-to-one vote.
Okay.
So, we hit the heavy one first. Okay, now, does it require roll call?
Does not require roll call.
We're still in the discussion phase here. Any discussion? Motion seconded?
No.
No? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Here we go.
And the second motion for the site plan approval.
Who that we approve, the site plan approval was documented?
Second, sorry.
All right, moved and seconded, discussion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Now, you need to deliberate on the stormwater special permit.
Stormwater?
The stormwater special permit. Where was that?
That was included in the hearing materials. There was an executive summary to a stormwater pollution prevention plan that reflected the work the conservation commission had done with the applicant on deconstruction and clearing of the lot. You don't have a draft decision for that because it wasn't something that was expressly discussed, so I'll be preparing that based on your discussion this evening. My expectation would be that, in general, it will mirror what you already have. A lot of the conditions will be separate because the specific conditions are specific to the special permit. I would mirror the general conditions outlined by counsel, and there was a document that identified the sequencing that the applicant intends to use, and I think that that was, as I recall, acceptable to the board through that. If the board felt there were certain limitations or items that needed to be done primarily, that would be something that you might condition. Perhaps the installation of the access road and the preparation of the lay-down areas prior to clearing, clearing of areas up to a certain acreage or square footage at a time and in a specific direction is something that you could do. Most likely, what I would recommend is that you require the installation, the construction access, preparation of the lay-down areas, and at least temporary sedimentation to proceed to the stormwater basins.
Yep.
To allow for the site to be controlled during clearing and then for clearing to commence from there.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but we've wrapped up our time clock items, right? We're not under any time constraint for the stormwater?
Well, you've closed your public hearing for the stormwater.
Yeah. It's all on remand, so we're not on a clock, correct? Including the stormwater, or is that...
Not including the stormwater.
Not including the stormwater.
The stormwater's not on remand. It's a general bylaw special permit.
Are we on a clock for that?
No.
You're on your 90-day clock. Well, that's...
I don't know that you are. I mean, here's the challenge. So, the stormwater review process is no longer zoning, it's now a general bylaw. So, while we're calling it a special permit, it's really not a special permit in the zoning sense at all. It's a special kind of permit. And so, it's not, I would argue that it's not subject to the time constraints under 40A or your zoning bylaw.
I would too.
But if it were, you know, you'd have to expedite it.
So, if I recalculate correctly from the meetings, all of the stormwater calculations and the stormwater documentation was compliant with the state.
Correct.
Before the modification.
Correct.
Which would have made it more conservative and more compliant, and actually reduces the stormwater challenge.
And we did get a comment from Greaves.
The engineering was positive, and also agreed that it was now more conservative and beyond compliant.
Correct. And what I'll say about the stormwater...
More conservative, I guess would be.
The stormwater permit, while it does take into account the post-construction facilities and management of water, the major reason for these permits is the disturbance of land greater than one acre.
During...
So, it's less about the pre-post calculations, you cover that under site plan approval, and that's where the stormwater that you're talking about, that's where that all falls in. What we're talking about now is construction activities and the management of erosion and sedimentation during open ground. So, as the applicant had said previously, they'll be cutting a lot of trees. There's a large halo around the project where they'll be leaving the stumps. That area is generally subject to less erosion and sedimentation because the stumps are holding the existing material there. The area within what will become the array where trees are being cut, stumps are being ground or removed... ground or removed, is where you will find the largest potential issue. And again, I don't necessarily anticipate that there will be, but that will be open loose soil that in a rain event could potentially have impact.
Yeah, well, considering the rain events, I would think we want, we would want to have significant conditions on that permit approval to prevent the runoff of silt and dirt and loose soil. I know that just in the last few construction projects I've seen, the runoff has been significant and has made quite a mess. I wouldn't support that at all. So I don't, but I don't know what the standard language is that we generally would put into such a condition set because that's not something I prepared for.
Yeah, I didn't either, and what we got was, I believe you're right, was an executive summary, it wasn't really the completed application, it wasn't, so.
And the.
I think the question is, are we ready tonight to, right?
That's the question, but the, to go along with that, this project is also subject to an order of conditions from the conservation commission, which includes a large number of erosion and sedimentation controls, hay bales, silt fence, all of that kind of stuff.
Yes, but that's primarily to protect the wetlands, not to protect the water runoff into the neighboring properties or the street.
During construction.
So, so I still think we, we need to have proper language in there to protect the general runoff, not necessarily just the runoff into the wetlands.
Okay.
And that's something that I'm, like I said, I'm not familiar with what the right language would be to put into that approval as conditions at this point.
He hit on some good ones.
If somebody else has that information, I'd be happy to listen to it, but that's not something that I've prepared, so I wouldn't be moving to approve this one with conditions.
Right away.
Well, I just, I don't have the conditions, is what I'm saying, so it wouldn't be my motion.
Can I make a suggestion, Mr. Chairman? So it's going to take us some time, we still have pending litigation involving the special permit and the site plan approval, notwithstanding the remand, so even though that decision has been voted and you could be signing it as soon as tomorrow, it'll still need to be filed, there'll still be an applicable appeal period after that gets filed, if there were to be a third party that would appeal it. And of course, we need to resolve the litigation with the court as well and just wrap that up. I think where you've got the applicant present tonight, if you're, if you prefer to have a written decision before you on the stormwater permit, and that's something that Adam's still preparing, I think to sort of take a belt and suspenders approach here, if you're not feeling too comfortable with extending it any further, you could ask the applicant just to confirm that there's no objection and that he'll grant any necessary extension, although I don't believe one is required under your stormwater bylaw through your next meeting, whenever that is.
November 5th.
And that'll give you an opportunity to create the special, the stormwater permit.
You know, it sounds like you're, you're moving in the same direction that I'm thinking, and I can put that together. It doesn't sound like anybody has specific conditions that they would like or orders, so I can certainly have something ready before next week.
Yeah, I just know that there's a significant hillside there, there's neighboring residential properties, and on other large projects, one in particular in that area, it caused significant damage to the neighboring properties from the, from the stormwater runoff. And so I just want to make sure that, that the same thing does not happen here.
Yes, agreed. And in my experience, the stormwater conditions tend to be, certain areas, certain volumes of materials stored for certain periods of time are not allowed or must be covered or must be somehow prevented. And then also, an additional condition would be that at no time shall there be deleterious conditions on the abutting.
On the abutting properties.
On the abutting properties or the, or the roads.
Yeah.
Does that sound correct?
I think that's right, and the only thing I was going to add is, you know, I don't, I'm fairly confident that the applicant's not prejudiced at all by granting whatever extension is needed because the stormwater permit's not under appeal. It's not at issue in the litigation. If you were to deny it, I mean, my understanding is the applicant combined the application out of convenience so that they'd all, the whole project would be discussed at the same time. I don't think a two-week delay, the applicant's not releasing any rights that it would have. If you were to deny the stormwater permit, the applicant would just appeal it the same way that it would have a right to do if you denied it tonight.
So the things currently under litigation, can they move forward now without this stormwater?
The project itself can't move forward without the stormwater, that's correct.
The litigation can.
Yes, in terms of wrapping up the litigation, but again, the decision needs to be finalized, signed and filed with the town clerk's office.
So through the chair, you'd have to ask for an extension of the time, if you want, if you want to.
If we want to, I don't believe we need to.
Okay.
Right?
I think what, what, I think what Dave is saying is checking in with the applicant and ensuring that the board finalizing deliberations on November 5th is not something they're opposed to.
Right.
Just as a matter of course, point of order, common courtesy, because the special permit and site plan approval that are under remand are approved, need to have the decision written and signed, filed with the town clerk, that all can move forward between now and November 5th, appeal period starts, and then the stormwater special permit would be wrapped up on November 5th without them foregoing any additional rights because it's outside of the remand and litigation. It's its own separate thing that they tied in to move the project forward and not have to worry about it should the board approve this and then have to come back and relitigate the whole project again in a separate public hearing.
I'm not entirely sure we haven't facilitated enough.
Okay.
At this point, I don't know how you guys feel, you want to take a straw poll, I don't know. Actually, one at all. Is there any objection?
We don't have an objection to waiting to November 5th on this piece. Is the decision going to be filed tomorrow or the next day or?
The decision through you, Mr. Chair, the decision is done, all I will have to do in the morning is, is complete the section that spoke about deliberations and what occurred tonight, that'll take me 15 minutes, and then it'll be provided to Adam, and it can be signed as, as soon as the members can come in and sign it.
So we wouldn't want to go beyond November 5th because we'd like to keep it within the timetable of all of this, but we don't have a problem with agreeing to November 5th?
About 14 days, something like that. And you can get it to us by email and?
Yeah, yeah, I'll put together the draft stormwater decision, send it out early next week.
This is a simple majority vote, correct?
Um, yes.
I think it is under the new bylaw.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, because I will be absent November 5th.
And then also, my understanding is that we don't all need to sign it, is that correct?
That's true, the, the way that the decisions are written, the chair can sign in lieu of the membership.
If it's ready, I can sign it tomorrow.
Very good.
I got a problem, we can do that.
The, the other decisions, the special permit and the site plan approval.
Already concluded, yes. Thank you.
Thank you, and is it possible for us to obtain a copy of those conditions tonight?
There you go.
Did you jot?
With the exception of the amendments.
There's one amended, one pre-construction meeting.
Thank you. It'll be on YouTube tonight. Are we good?
So what do we need? Do we need a motion for?
Continue.
No.
We'll just, we'll put it on the agenda and I'll, I'll have something to you, like I said, early next week.
Okay.
You can read it while you're all strung out on your kids' candy.
All right, so that's that.
What, do you take your kids' candy away?
Public hearing. Have you met my kids?
Yeah, so we need to, well, the public hearings have already been closed, right?
No, this public hearing.
Oh, so now, now we are on to.
Warrant articles.
Public hearing for the board warrant articles, and if we will.
Read the, excellent. The Lunenburg Planning Board will hold the public hearing on October 22nd, 2018, 6:35 PM or thereafter at the Joseph Pilata Meeting Room, Town Hall, 17 Main Street, Lunenburg, Mass. 01462, to make alterations to the town of, code of the town of Lunenburg, Mass. I, Article 2, Definitions, Section 250-2 dot 1, II, Article 4, Use Regulations, Section 250 dash, whoops, Section 250-4 dash 1, Permitted and Prohibited Uses.
Welcome to stick around if you want.
II, II, Article 4, Use Regulations, Section 250-4 dot 1, 5, Temporary Moratorium on Sale and Distribution of Recreational Marijuana IV, or IV, Article 6, 250-6 point 5, Signs, and V, Article 8, Administration, Section 250-8 dot 3, Board of Appeals. Copies are on file in the planning office, 960 Mass. Ave, Lunenburg, Mass.
Through the chair?
Yes.
This is a number of different articles that we're reviewing?
Yes.
Four of them, it's not.
Five.
Five, sorry, not just one.
Correct, five articles, one hearing.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, start at the top.
Let's do that.
Definitions, Section 250, 2 point 1. In May, we proposed and had passed a use table that included a variety of new definitions for uses within the zoning bylaw. Some of those definitions were also contained within Section 2 point 1. So this article looks to delete duplicative definitions from Section 2 point 1 that currently now exist in Section 250, five, or 4 point 1, rather. So as you look through, all the redlined definitions are proposed to be deleted as they are now defined in Section 250, 4 point 1 of the Code of Lunenburg.
So just to reiterate, all these are currently defined in a currently town meeting accepted.
That is correct.
So.
They're just duplicates.
Correct.
Okay.
I don't know if you want to go through the whole boat or take comments one by one?
Well, I mean.
I don't mean, I mean article by article, not definition by definition.
We probably should go article by article.
I would, there's five of them.
That's fine.
So do we have to vote on each article?
Yes.
We want, this is a public hearing.
Correct.
Yes, we want.
And that's what I mean by going article by article, do you want to hear public comment?
See if anybody has a comment on this.
This, before we move.
Very good.
So I believe, I believe there's handouts here, if everybody's gotten some?
You're gonna make it?
Seven weeks now.
What?
Seven weeks I'm at coffee.
Jeez.
So I, I mean.
It doesn't look like there's any public comment.
The chair, do you want?
Or did you already ask?
No, I haven't actually, I'm just looking, what, is there any public comment?
On the first article.
Yep, on terms and definitions. So basically. On the first article.
The first one is Article 2, Definitions.
It's not correct on there for.
Section 250 dash 2 dot 1.
If you give me one minute, I can give you the.
I'm sure.
Oh, you mean what it actually is.
I'm sure it's not going to be warranted.
It's 14, it would be 14 on the, the draft warrant, but not all residents have access to the draft warrant, since it hasn't been printed yet. So.
So I move we accept 250 dash 2 dot 1 modifications to remove the duplicate terms.
Second.
There was no public comment?
Didn't, appear to be.
Okay. Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Excellent.
So the next one would be Article 15 on the draft.
Court order.
Yes, sir.
Dave Passios, 56 Whiting Street. Just so that this all goes down the way I believe it is correct, you have an open public hearing, and you can't accept until you close the public hearing. And you stated earlier, you're going to cover all three articles during the public hearing, so my understanding, oh, five, my understanding is that you can't take the votes on any of them until you close the public hearing.
Good point.
That's just to keep everything.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, good catch.
Thank you.
I retract my motion.
And there, your second is retract.
Yes.
So Article 15 on the draft warrant would be what we have here as number two, which is Section 250, 4 point 1, Permitted and Prohibited Uses. This is a modification to the recently approved use table. There was a Scrivener's error in Section 4 point 1 H4 and 4 point 1 H5 of the table under the Village Center District. It currently reads as SP, it should read as SP dash Z for special permit per the zoning board, so this article corrects that, and it deletes table note number three, which reads for the purposes of the use table, uses defined in Sections 250, 4 point 1, D through N shall control. So this is saying that the uses defined in that section override those in Section 2 point 1 or 250, 2 point 1, which the previous article proposed to delete. So this is just cleaning up all the language, so it is reasonable and consistent.
Sounds good. And there is no SP.
There is no standard, there's no just SP.
So, may I ask a question?
You may.
In 4 point 1 and 3, earth removal across the board is just SP, and 4 point 1 and 5, veterinary hospital, it is, there's also a.
Oh, look at that, there is a.
And so we still have this residual SP.
Correct. The SP under veterinary hospital is a catch I had not seen, and that should also be a dash Z. So that is an article, that is a floor amendment that we can.
That's for veterinary?
Yes, and that, again, it's under only the, why is it in here?
I'm sorry.
It's under tri-town landing for SP, I don't think that that should be there at all.
It should just be a dash.
It should be nothing, right?
For which one?
Veterinary hospital in tri-town landing area, I don't remember even discussing.
No, I don't recall discussing that at all.
Should be, just a dash.
And with the earth removal, doesn't that sit with the board of selectmen? It does, and it's a, it's a special permit, that's not, that's a permit that's special, sort of like stormwater.
Yeah.
It's not a use.
So it's gonna.
It's, is it a PB? No, it's not, not yet.
It's gonna be a Z?
It's intended to be though, isn't it?
No, I think that ultimately there will be a swap over to the planning board.
Okay, so you're gonna need a new?
Correct.
Okay.
So today it's board of selectmen, correct?
Correct.
Something they should be.
Do we define anywhere in here what SP without a dash?
We just said that, no? So we're gonna call it BOs or something?
Yeah.
I'm just putting it in.
SP is.
Well, maybe we can simply add to the key, SP equals special permit board of selectmen. Just say a plain SP is.
As long as there's no more.
No, let's reserve that.
No other ones.
Yeah, but you might need it for something else. Put BOs. Let's reserve that as special.
Makes it bigger chask.
Special permits are ours.
Our specialties. So how do we handle, you're gonna have to, you're gonna need a floor amendment for those?
Okay. So it'll have to come from one of us then?
Someone who's gonna be there.
You're not gonna be there? Okay, I'll do it.
Be in Austin.
I can, I can do it if it, if it ultimately needs to be done.
Okay.
You all don't want to do it.
Through the chair, any comments on this one?
You think I'm afraid to do it?
Public comment, right, no, we haven't gotten there yet, are we done amongst ourselves? Is there any public comment on the permitted and prohibited uses revisions of the table?
They're all leaping to the mic.
Okay, we've done such a great job of. Okay, we've done such a great job of correcting ourselves. Um, super.
So, that won't move on to the third one?
Yes.
Okay, so, this is the modification to the more, temporary moratorium for marijuana, uh, and that is article number sixteen in the town meeting warrant, the proposed town meeting warrant. Uh, this extends the town's moratorium from May, from November thirty-first, two thousand eighteen, to May thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, to allow for the finalization of the current planning process and the vote on prohibition at the ballot to be linked and closely follow, uh, to prevent the gap in time in which something may be approved. So, there is two small changes. One is the date change from November thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, to May thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, uh, and the other is my own neuroses by finalizing the sentence, uh, in section D, uh, that was cut off at one point during printing.
Is there any public comment on this article, please?
Yeah, Carl Luck, fifty cents at length. Um, yeah, I may miss something in these, in these words here, but this seems to be basically the same language from May of two thousand seventeen, when this was passed to begin with. Um, and what I just heard was, it's to buy time until you hope it can be prohibited. But I don't see any implication in here about prohibiting it. What I see in here is, the moratorium shall be in effect through, blah, blah, during the moratorium period, the town shall undertake a planning process to address the potential impacts of recreational marijuana in the town. So, it's sending a message that you're gonna do some homework, create some policies, some regulations. If this doesn't send a message, we're buying time to try and prohibit it. So, I have two questions. One, since this is about a year and a half old, is there any output or work product from your investigations into the potential impacts over the last year and a half?
Uh, to answer that, um, the Cannabis Control Commission just recently came out with their regulations, and we were, we, we didn't feel it was appropriate to start working on ours until we had theirs completed?
That, that, that's why, I, I didn't refer to that part of it, just the first part of the sentence, which says potential impacts of marijuana on the town. Nothing to do with the state regulations.
Well, I think what the moratorium was originally put in place for was to allow for the planning process of how to regulate or prohibit, or prohibit marijuana.
Or prohibit? That's, that's not in here. It was never mentioned when this was passed, that the goal was to buy time to prohibit.
I don't think that that's the goal, to buy time. The planning board has looked to offer...
No, the goal was to, what you just said again, was prohibit. I keep hearing the word prohibit, but it's not anywhere a year and a half ago, when this was put in place, and it's not anywhere in what you're proposing this time. What you're proposing this time, and the sentence that I read, has nothing to do with the regulations. Unless I misunderstand the sentence, if I could finish, please.
The, to see if the town will prohibit?
No, no. I'm trying to get an answer. Is there any work product from the first part of the statement?
So, you want...
That the town shall undertake a planning process to address the potential impacts of recreational marijuana in the town. Is there any output from that year and a half investigation?
We, we, we did do, yeah, it was just...
Could we make that public?
Um, this has all been discussed in previous meetings.
So, it is all...
This has all been disseminated to us through the state...
Of what the impact? Can you give me a brief, a brief summary of what the impact is to the town?
Voluntary planning process to address the potential impacts of recreational marijuana.
I think what you're looking for is to see what the next steps are, correct?
No, I'm trying to, I'm looking for, what was passed a year and a half ago, was to buy time to assess the potential impacts of recreational marijuana in the town. And I'm looking for a summary of what those impacts are.
Big part of that was to get the town's input on how they felt about the different categories, which we really just got those, those categories relatively late, uh, in the game, because the, the state didn't, didn't come up with their regulations until relatively late in the game. We did surveys, we've put together a bunch of materials, we've discussed it, um, in, in meetings.
We've had...
And one of the, one of the regulatory, regulatory discoveries that we came out, um, while discussing this, is there are a number of individuals in town that, uh, would look for prohibition, uh, of marijuana uses, maybe not across the board, but partially. Uh, so, we've discussed this and determined, um, we would have to have a vote, uh, to comply with the state regulations, uh, if we were to have any prohibition of any of the types. And so, we discussed how we would go about doing that, uh, and that resulted in us breaking the, each individual type out into a ballot question that would have to be asked of the town, because it needs to be voted on both at town meeting and as a ballot question. Um, and based upon the timing, uh, that we had for putting forth that ballot question, uh, during a town election, uh, and then being able to present at town meeting, we were not able to use this election, uh, period for it, because of restriction of the type of election.
Statewide, yeah.
It couldn't be on a statewide election ballot. Uh, and so, that means it has to go to our next, uh, election, which does not, did not give us ample time to be able to both come up with a proposed regulation and proposed, um, prohibition of each of the categories. So, we're, we, through the course of our meetings, we chose to take a bifurcated approach, where we have both a prohibition proposal that the town gets to vote on, and a logical regulation that we feel represents the town's opinion of how it should be regulated. Uh, we will go forward with the vote. If the vote is in favor, the elected vote is in favor, then we can vote on the town floor at town meeting to have the moratorium. If, I'm sorry, not the moratorium, the, the prohibition of the given type. If it gets approved on the town floor, then that prohibition stands. If it gets not approved on the town floor, then we propose the regulation, uh, on the town floor, um, for how we would regulate it in the town.
Which is what we're working on.
For approval of the bylaw. And this is what we've been taking our input on. It's kind of complicated.
We also had, we also had several, uh...
Kind of complicated. It would be a lot easier if we could just vote it all at town meeting, uh, but because you can't do that, there, you have to incorporate this ballot vote, uh, into this process if there's a moratorium. Uh, and because there's a number of, um, individuals, actually, there's a, there's participation in town of people who want it, um, to be, um, to be prohibited, or at least certain types of uses to be prohibited. Um, we felt it, it was in our best interest to take this, uh, this dual approach, uh, to have, let the town vote for either prohibition or what we consider the, the logical regulation.
But we also did go immediately on effect, finding mission, if you will. Started collecting data from different towns, started talking to each other as a board about it. Then we had several open, uh, meetings where we had the, the presentation that you gave, um, with, I think with town council's help, was it town council's help?
Council was here for you.
Yeah, for that. So, we've been discussing it for a while, you know, since, since last year.
Okay, I, I know you've been doing a lot of work, but this thing just keeps dragging out and out. I mean, the state dragged it out far enough, and now we're dragging out again. I think the town spoke. They voted for this. The majority of the town voted for this. So, I don't know why we, why we keep trying to, to, to kill this. And we keep talking, and we, we keep talking about, we want economic development, we want, you know, all these things in town, and yet, this is probably one of the areas of the biggest economic development that's gonna happen in the next, my life, anyway, around, and it's passing us by quickly. So, we're, we're just gonna delay it again. Nobody's gonna be interested in doing anything here. So, by the time the moratorium passes or not, I think the market's gonna pass this little town by. So, I, I am strongly against yet another moratorium. Um, other towns don't need it. They're getting their job done, even though the state hung them up. The town voted for it, and now, because some number of people, I don't know what percentage had polled or responded, you know, these little polls of a hundred and fifty people, to me, you know, are interesting, but they are certainly not statistically significant, and I would hope we're not running our town based on, you know, the handful of people that jump up and down and come to three, you know, charrettes. Um, and all of a sudden, it becomes consensus.
But we do, but we do run our town. The bylaws are made by the people who show up for the town meeting, and...
That's why I'm here.
Correct.
Yeah.
So...
Thank you.
And we also did need the moratorium to prevent somebody from coming in without regulation.
Yes, so that's the other big part of it, is that if we don't have the moratorium, and then there's no regulation, because we don't have any...
But you're gonna stop that. You're gonna have a regulation available for us.
Yes, but there's a, uh, there's a dead zone where...
Not in time for this town meeting.
Right.
Hi, sure. Um, Katie Adams from Williams Drive. Um, and I've been to all of the hearings. I think you've done a nice job to lay it out and explain the timeline, and without the moratorium, I think, then having nothing has its consequence. So, I don't think right now is the time to battle out what the community wants. I think you've laid out a path where that decision gets battled out in the spring, nice and fair and consistent with all the safety nets, that we end up with something good or good enough, even if people, I mean, even if prohibition failed. Um, for the sake of consistency every time it comes up, and that's why I come to these, is to talk about this idea, this is what Lunenburg already decided. If you go back to question four, and I'm sorry to repeat myself this, but I just, um, that was to legalize marijuana. So, I say this every meeting, that to legalize marijuana, somebody may have voted yes, because they simply wanted to decriminalize it, or they simply wanted to grow one plant, or any number of things. Voting yes on question four wasn't voting yes on pot shops in your neighborhood. It wasn't voting yes on, um, you know, industrialized, you know, cultivation facilities. That's a separate process. That's why we get this process, so Lunenburg can decide what they want out of this part of the phase. Question four has nothing to do with what we're doing now, and it's referenced as the opinion of the town. That was a state vote to legalize marijuana. It shouldn't be connected or affiliated with any of the work we're doing now, um, because it's, it's such a different, there's just no really relationship between the two, because legalizing isn't selling, cultivating, et cetera. Um, and then, I also like to point out usually, and I've been doing this for a couple of years now, um, is when we talk about economic development, I always like to just point out that it's through the, um, promotion of drug use and, um, increased cognitive impairment, and the industry, when they come here, their goal will be to sell drugs, and, um, they're just selling increased cognitive impairment and drug use. And as a mom of four kids and a background in pharmacy, I just personally think looking to grow an economy on drug use is not something I support, and I think we can look for other ways to grow our economy. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate the repetition of the first point that you made. Saves me having to do it. Um, it recently, um, I, I did not understand that initially, and, and I'm glad that it's been brought up.
So, um, I... Public comment on this comment?
Okay. I guess we go over to the next one, huh?
And so, left on the table?
Nope, nope, nope. Actually, I was...
He was trying to make a motion.
I was gonna make a motion, I didn't realize I couldn't.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm gonna get attacked again. No, just kidding.
So, next one will, will be Article thirteen on the draft warrant. This is an amendment to section two fifty, six point five, uh, the sign bylaw. Under section F, um, the second to last page of your packet, third to last page of your packet, it adds in section four, allowing one freestanding sign, twelve square feet or less, to be installed twenty-five feet from the front property line, twenty feet from the side property line, and not to be lighted without the need for site plan approval. Someone wants to install a sign to the full thirty-six square feet allowed by the bylaw, lit or twenty-two, twenty feet from the front property line, they would need to go through site plan approval. Uh, this will hopefully help small businesses who locate in existing buildings. Uh, anyone building new is already doing site plan approval, so their sign is gonna be covered under that.
Did you print it on this one?
Oh, I'm sorry. And, uh, also, under section E, it adds home occupation to a four-square-foot, um, non-lit sign in residential districts.
Any public comment for this?
Sorry, nine square feet.
Can we back, uh, Lancaster Avenue? Um, just in clarification on what is, what you mean by lighted? Is that an external light shining on it?
Any, any lights on it?
Itself, okay. So, a, a homeowner who also operates a business would not be able to put up a highlighted, a lighted sign?
Well, that would be covered under, yes, that would be covered under, uh, section E one. Um, it does not allow for, uh, non-illuminated or indirectly illuminated. So, under section E, you could have an indirectly illuminated, so a spotlit sign, uh, but it couldn't be internally illuminated.
Okay. And the reason for, for this prohibition?
For the, the illumination?
For no lighting on these small, small signs?
Uh, is to prevent them from being installed in a manner that would be unsafe, uh, to traffic passing by, uh, or placed in a, in a way that was, uh, had unintended consequences. So, so, again, they can, they can do a lit sign through site plan approval.
Right. At the same size?
At a larger size, up to thirty-six square feet.
Okay, okay.
So, this is, this is to give someone who doesn't, who wants to operate a business, doesn't necessarily need the illuminated sign, or doesn't feel that they need it, doesn't want to go through site plan approval to just identify their business, the opportunity to do so by right, uh, but they don't give up their rights to, in the future, grow and decide they need something larger and, and themselves with the other portions of the bylaw.
All right, just provides another option for, for these people.
It's E, correct. A cheaper option.
Great, thank you.
Dave Passios, fifty-six Whiting Street. Just a quick question on the offsets from the street. Is that from the center of the road, the edge of the town's easement?
It's from the edge of the right-of-way, or the property line.
Edge of the right-of-way. So, you're talking about possibly up to ten feet off the, off the gav...
The pavement, correct.
And then another twenty feet?
So...
Well, the current setback is twenty feet from the street. Our bylaws define street as the width of the right-of-way. So, under the current bylaws, it would be twenty feet per site plan approval. The extra five feet gives someone that little bit of buffer to ensure that they're...
Okay.
Did, that, I, I appreciate the question. This, this came up, uh, a year or so ago, um, to do with...
Car wash.
Um, no, it was the parking. The car, it was right at the line. Wasn't the car wash, it was, um...
Detailer?
It was the detailer.
Oh, oh, the, the, it wasn't the detailer, it was the auto sales down there.
Oh, okay.
The same building, yeah, yes, yeah.
Right. And ZBA made a determination, didn't they?
It was under the previous building commissioner.
Okay.
He gave them his interpretation, which they supported. The current building commissioner has read it, and through the definition of street, it includes the full width of the right-of-way. The setback is from the right-of-way or the street, which are synonymous terms per our zoning bylaw, so it's from the actual property line.
So, is that currently understood by the ZBA, so that they don't change?
I believe it is.
Okay. Um, is it written down in, anywhere, or is it just a interpretation of the two separate definitions that include the right-of-way?
Well, if you, if you read the way that our...
I totally understood how way it was supposed to be, 'cause, yeah, um...
I can read you the definition, give me a second.
I understand the definition of the road, um...
Actually, it's in this first thing you have here, so we don't have to look for it. So, if you read the definition of street as it exists in section two fifty, "A public way or private way, either shown on a plan approved in accordance with the subdivision control law or otherwise qualifying a lot for frontage under the subdivision control law, or in existence when the provision of the subdivision control law became effective in the town of Lunenburg, in the opinion of the planning board, suitable grade, construction to be erected, street lines, see exterior line above." So, it's, it's been interpreted by the current building commissioner that the street incorporates the entirety of... that the street incorporates the entirety of the right-of-way.
Right, but, I mean, I guess, I guess the point that I think the previous speaker and myself are trying to make is that bylaws for a reason, and depending on who the individual occupying a certain position, their certain opinion is, changes the total outcome of the administration of the current bylaw.
That's, that's his job. Every community deals with that. That's, that's the way that the state law is written, it gives.
He's the judge.
The building commissioner the power to interpret and adjudicate zoning. If someone disagrees with that, they're able to avail themselves of the appeal procedure through the zoning board of appeals. If the town felt that they didn't want the building commissioner to do that anymore, they could institute a zoning bylaw that would create a zoning officer. It doesn't change that situation, because whoever holds the zoning officer position.
Right.
You fall into the same thing. Zoning is, it's an interpreted law. So, you know, how, how you read it depends. And I think that if you put five lawyers in a room, you could elicit 10 opinions about the way something reads.
Is the question, can we be clearer? Is that?
What's that?
Is the question, can we be clearer? Is that what you're getting at?
It was very clear to some people and not clear at all to others. So, I mean, that's just how it goes, I suppose. There's nothing we can do about it. The best we can do has been done by having a zoning officer, as was just explained to me.
Okay.
I appreciate that, thank you.
You're welcome. And then the final one would be Article, it would be, Article 12 on the draft town meeting warrant. This is a.
Did we ask for public comment on that?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yes, we did.
We did, okay, I wasn't sure.
This would be a modification to Section 250, 8.3. Under Section C, it would modify number one by inserting the number nine after MGL, Chapter 40A, sections. It would include 9, 11, 14, 15, and 16. It would then delete number three in its entirety and number four in its entirety. This would avail the town of using the statutory time limits for the approval of special permits, and remove a hard 90-day clock from the date of filing for the decision to be made. This is problematic in a couple of ways. The first being it puts the town under unnecessary pressure for some complicated special permits that may or may not be subject to it, depending on interpretation. And secondly, under Section 4, there isn't a necessarily clear direction on how one would avail themselves of filing a constructive approval request or demand per this bylaw. And it, and it says the building commissioner shall, and if the building commissioner were to not, it doesn't give clear direction on what the implications of that would be, or what recourse there would be to that. Whereas MGL 40A, I believe it's Section 11 in that group, is very explicit on how one for constructive approval, what the standards are, what the requirements are, and where one would do that, and how that process is carried out. So this puts the town in line with what the majority of towns, or all the towns that I'm familiar with, in my understanding, the majority of the towns in the state use as far as time limits and procedures for the adjudication and granting of special permits.
And also to remind everybody, this is the same thing as was on last year's warrant?
That is correct.
Any public comment? Please.
Dave Passios, 56 Whiting Street. The chair just hit the nail on the head for what I was, what I came up here for. I'd like to understand how this is any different than what town meeting has already voted down?
There is no difference from the article that was proposed in the spring. I feel that perhaps I didn't make the case with enough substance and enough.
Bigger?
Well, not even bigger. I don't think that I brought enough backup. And I don't believe I provided adequate justification for why the town would want to alter this bylaw. The board has signaled their support, and they've asked that it be, be re-put on the town meeting warrant, and thus it is.
Okay, as a voter and an avid person that goes to town meetings, I hope this is the last time it comes up, if it does get voted down. I think bringing it back time after time after time to try to push it through by explaining it a different way is not appropriate. I understand that maybe your comments about not feeling that you gave, my understanding anyway, of what you just said, giving town meeting all the information you would have liked to, to make a decision on this, didn't come through the last time around. I can understand that. But again, second time around, I hope we're done with it one way or the other. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further public comment? I would just like to respond to that previous comment. Is that this is, is, I'm not quite sure when it was inserted. I can only imagine it was a decade plus ago. We are consistently getting more and more complex and more and more complex projects, with some of the applicants being less and less willing to take into consideration the board's comments. I can use an example of two consecutive applications having ignored every single comment that we made and presenting us with the same exact set of plans when they knew that we were under a time clock and we probably could only have three public hearings, public meetings. By making it from the opening of the public hearing process, rather than the filing, just, it, it gives us the ability to get into more detail on more detailed projects. It does not limit our ability to close at the first meeting. So that would be.
In my opinion, it strengthens your board. We're your board. I mean, if, if, it doesn't make sense to weaken your own board, to me. That just is nonsense. So in my opinion, we need this. I need this to move forward in this position and do anything of substance. That's the way I see it. So I'd like to see it passed for that reason. And not only that, but it brings the, our bylaws into consistent language with some of the documentation that we used to hand out, that you used to be able to find in the back of the bylaw with regard to timelines. And that what the state publishes. So if you went to the state document and said, oh, this is what, you know, this is my timeline, this is what has to happen for, for special permits, you'd follow that. Not in Lunenburg, the only town on the planet that has a different bylaw. Didn't make sense to me at all. So we need to get it, in my opinion, pushed, because we need it. We need the power.
Any further public comment, comment from the board? All right, well, that was the last one, eh?
I move that we accept the, do I have to?
Close the public hearing.
Oh, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second?
Oh, sorry. Any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, it is closed.
Now the public hearing is closed. I move, do I have to do each one individually? Or can I do them all collectively?
If you think there's going to be any dispute, you could, you should do them individually.
I don't think there's going to be any dispute, so I'll take a shot at the first one. I'm not beyond withdrawing my motions, as you well know. I would move that we approve the five article amendments as documented, acknowledging that we may have to make some minor modifications on the floor, as noted previously.
Second?
Any discussion?
At least I got second at that time.
All in favor? All right.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. Onward?
So onward. Minutes approval. The executive session, I think this is the.
Now you've got to sit and read them.
I already read it.
Y'all didn't come in.
I came in.
Well, one of you did.
That's right.
Just one copy or?
Yeah, I only have one copy. We only make one copy of executive session minutes.
You really can't even discuss.
You can say that you want to make changes, I think, right?
This is everybody's favorite part of the meeting, watching the planning board read minutes. It's terrible. If only people had made time to go into the office, as I did.
Would you like a gold stack?
Yes. I've never had one.
Here you go.
I'm all set.
Somebody did their homework.
He was just chastising us for that.
No comments here?
Nope.
I'll file.
I have a motion.
I move that we approve the minutes for the executive session.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 There's another seven minutes right here.
The minutes approval for 9/24/18.
About a motion, man.
I can't.
Oh, you were here. I move we approve the minutes from 9/24/18. Second?
Any discussion?
All in favor? Aye.
Abstain.
Aye.
Thank you, I forgot that.
No worries.
Okay, minutes approval done. Committee reports. Green Community Task Force, Mr. Bitner is not available to give that. We're going to have to reassign that? Should that be on the agenda?
We'll put a reorganization on the next meeting.
Okay. Capital Planning Committee, that's me. We met, we met last Tuesday, and we didn't really have much to do. It was a very short meeting. Basically, we had a discussion about how to set up the spreadsheets, and clarification on the Google Drive access to them. That was about it. The Stormwater Task Force, we have not met since our last planning board meeting. That's coming up two days from now, three days from now, this coming Thursday. The Agricultural Commission, we met, now I'm not just the liaison, I'm the member. So I can say we met last Thursday. Discussion, oh, we had, we had a good turnout. We had two people out of the three applicants. Two people came to gain a reference from the board, or the commission, for the Board of Selectmen, which seems to have been required by the town manager, by the previous applicant, who wasn't at the meeting, so they didn't get a reference. So we had two new applicants. So hopefully we'll have more than just three members of a five commission, member commission with two newly appointed alternates.
Easy.
And then, oh, and also the farmer's market in the center has relocated to the Dragonfly Cafe to be inside, and it's going to extend through, I believe, the end of the year, at least through the end of November.
They're bringing the llamas inside?
I don't think the llamas are going to go, no.
But the goods can.
So MJTC?
Yeah, MJTC meeting was October 10th. The one piece of interesting information was the Safe Routes to School Infrastructure Application Process is a, a new infrastructure funding program that opens up in November. Opens up in November. You take a two-mile radius around the school, and there is funding now available for infrastructure projects that promote safe routes to school. So this can be bike paths or sidewalk structures and so forth. The project can be small, medium, and large. And the, it has to be a, a school that participates in the Safe Routes to School program to apply.
Do ours?
You know, I'm not so sure if ours are or not. I think they are.
Okay.
But I don't know, I don't have that information, so. Let's see, there was some discussion about revising some of their, their transportation evaluation criteria. This is what goes into the TIP program to decide whether or not they choose your project. So there was a lot of discussion about the criteria, because they want to change it. And some of the changes didn't really make sense. So we, we did some significant restructuring of it. They're going to come back at the next meeting with some more revisions. And so the next meeting is November 14th.
And just for those people who are not acronym professionals, MJTC is Monarchus Joint Transportation Commission?
Correct. Committee, committee.
And the TIP is the Transportation Improvement Program, which is a grant?
Correct. That's where we get our money to do all the special projects, like the Summer Street Rejuvenation Project is a TIP project.
So that could, that money could be used for, for putting in new sidewalks?
It can be used for any kind of infrastructure that promotes safe transportation to school. So if there is a route that's been identified that could benefit from a sidewalk, by the way, it has to be K through eight. Has to be, to benefit a K through eight school, not a high school. Yeah, they figure the high schoolers don't, don't need the, the extra safety, I guess.
Well, we have a, I mean, how do you, can you separate? We have a middle, high school. I mean.
That's fine. Any school that has a grade eight or below in it qualifies under the program. So if you wanted to put in a sidewalk or whatever, or a bike path.
Do we have a school representative that goes to the MJTC, would you?
We do not.
So this information gets to them not at all?
This information went out to all towns and school representatives. It generally goes out to the superintendent and all the principals of the schools. They were the ones that were solicited to participate in the Safe Routes to School program. And any proposal for an improvement project needs to come from the principal of the school that's making the proposal.
Thank you.
Good information.
Open space?
Yeah, open space. We're meeting Wednesday night. Our last meeting was a little over a week ago, when we had a charrette. We had a good turnout, covered a lot of stuff, got some really great tips from the public that I think we're going to try and integrate into our document. The open space plan, kind of like you want to throw everything you can. member, and three at-large, and they're looking at shifting one of the CONCOM seats, Conservation Commission seats, over to an at-large member. They have, they had a resignation from the Conservation Commission. The appointment went back to conservation, and my understanding is all the members went, "Nope."
Yeah.
Other than the one member who's currently participating, there isn't, I believe, an interested party, but they are not a member of the Conservation Commission, nor do they desire to be. And so, the committee is looking to fill that seat with an at-large member, and is looking for the planning board, who many, many years ago was the genesis of this committee to make that alteration.
Yeah, I would just say, as you know, they are a subcommittee, an ad hoc committee. They cannot make any decisions about anything. They're just advisory in nature. And we found that there's a lot of people in the public, you know, who want to participate in this kind of thing.
Certainly.
That have, actually have quite a bit of expertise.
Of course. I guess I would just ask if we feel that the few people that are from other groups are representative enough, or are there other groups in town that you could draw from?
I don't believe, as an at-large member, I don't think you're restricted to, or maybe you are. Maybe you can't be on a board, can you not?
I don't think there's anything that would keep you from.
Yeah. But, so we do insist that we, I think we still do the posting, and we ask for, you know, as many applicants as possible, so.
No, I wouldn't have a problem at all going to the at-large. I just wanted to get that out there.
Yeah.
If there's a less represented group that should, that you feel would be better represented as a-
I don't feel that way, but I certainly, I mean, I can understand ag might feel underrepresented. I don't know. I don't know how the other-
As you said, they could be at-large. We've already got a deficiency we're holding down. We're having a hard enough time staying afloat ourselves.
Right.
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Hello.
Sure.
Just a quick question. I'm wondering what the appointing process is for open space?
That's us.
Our bylaws-
That's us.
You're the appointing authority?
It's an ad hoc.
It's an ad hoc. It's not a chartered or other bylaw committee.
Okay, but there's still an appointing authority, and that's the appointing.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. So, is there any further discussion about, I mean, we need a motion, right?
If you choose to change it, you would need a motion.
If we choose to change it, I guess the first question is, do we choose to allow this requested change, right? Because it's been requested.
Who's requesting it? The committee of them?
Yeah, we did. We talked it over with the existing member from CONCOM and the rest of the membership, and they were not opposed to it, because it's hard to find people who are really interested in being a part of a committee that has no authority.
Well, see, you put it that way. You make it sound so exciting.
I get to serve, and I don't get to say anything? You make no decisions? Yeah, you make no decisions, right.
Do you want to make a motion?
Oh, yeah. So I move that we make the changes to the ad hoc committee membership to allow one more at-large member.
And remove-
And remove one CONCOM member.
Second?
Did you get that, Roger? Okay. Any discussion further? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. My. That's it? All right, so notice and communications, is that where we'll go?
Yep, they've been scanned to the Board. You should have gotten also the Citizen Planner Training Collaborative Fall Workshop Packet. Avail yourself. I will pay for you to go. There are some good classes there. Some of them will be at MRPC. There's probably some down in Worcester at CMRPC. If you really want to drive to Brockton and go to Old Colony Planning Council, you can do that, but I think between MRPC and CMRPC, you can probably find a class or two that would interest you. And they really are good classes. I know Attorney Costa presents at some of them, and it's usually attorneys, practitioners, talking about relevant things that you'll deal with.
Yes, and I looked at them, they are spread quite far and wide.
Well, because they cover the entire state, so they try and work with the 13 regional planning agencies to have stuff that will interest their memberships at locations that they can access.
All right. So, moving on to meeting schedule. All Board meetings are held at Town Hall at 6:30 unless otherwise indicated. The next meeting is November 5th, where we'll have a public discussion of marijuana processing facilities and testing labs.
So that's two separate types, but we felt that they could be lumped together based on, it's processing-
Yep.
And testing labs is its own individual.
So the question is, the craft cultivators is going to be after that?
Yes.
Probably on the, oh-
I think it's actually December 10th.
Okay. Coming, coming soon. And then we've got our special town meeting on November 13th. We obviously won't have a meeting that night.
It's a Tuesday.
Well, it was already obvious that we wouldn't have a meeting that Tuesday.
Well, correct, but-
Thanks. And get anything on the 26th?
Yep. The 26th is the craft cultivator.
Craft cultivator. No applications, permits, or anything?
Nope. Silly season hasn't started yet.
Sure has some places. Okay, so we're at the second public comment stage.
Come on! Nice debate!
Yeah, here we go.
All right, Katie Adams, Williams Drive, and I just wanted to comment about the moratorium article, I guess, in making sure that people very clearly understand that it's not an anti-marijuana vote, because I don't, you kind of sense that tonight, that I feel like people are getting ready to shoot it down if they're pro-marijuana, and that I think it's very important, it's explained very clearly, that that's not where we're at. Because obviously, a lot of, I mean, I'll pounce all over it in the spring if it's really happening, but right now, I really hope everybody realizes that for this town's sake, everybody has a better outcome if it's planned correctly, even if that means it's coming. So I just got a sense tonight, and the reason I'm commenting again is, there was a comment made by somebody who has already left about people who come to the meetings just to jump up and down. And I started coming to planning board meetings for this topic in early 2017, when the first moratorium was there to learn about it and to follow it, and to see how the hands are often tied, like by waiting for the state, and where we've broken it up and we're going through a topic at a time, and each meeting you're talking about it. There's, I don't feel there's a sense that it's not being worked on, or the can's being kicked. I think it's just being planned. Bringing a drug industry into town, I feel like that's sort of a pretty big deal, but I just, I'm thinking of just from, nobody misunderstanding that this fall, we're not fighting whether or not marijuana's coming, we're just trying to plan for a good outcome. And I think at-town meeting, it needs, we get to, I think, sell it very carefully, that we don't get it shot down just because people are pro-marijuana, because then we're left with nothing, so, all right.
That's right, I agree.
Yes.
Exactly right. I don't have a problem with Mr. Lux's comments. I mean, you know, he's entitled to tell us we're not doing our job fast enough, but, you know, I think we've been working pretty hard on this, and I think we just need a little more time to get it, all the kinks ironed out, so that we're ready in either case.
I don't think that's what he was saying. I think he was asking why it's taken so long, and I can understand-
That's what I'm saying, right. Why is it taking so long?
Well, we're not doing our job. But anyways, yes. And then also, yeah, that's basically, I don't want to speak for any of the Board, but I think that's a necessity at this point, so that we aren't left open to unregulated recreational marijuana industry. Anyways, any further public comment? Ongoing items, earth removal permitting.
I still owe you guys a draft of that.
And that's following the discussion with-
The Selectmen, yep.
Yeah. Village at Flat Hill, drainage review and enforcement.
So they've cleared the woody vegetation around the edges. The pond seems to be functioning more or less adequately. There's still some documentation I want to follow up and see if I can get from them.
Okay. Economic development?
Thursday evening, 5 o'clock, in this lovely room here, there will be another Business Town Partnership Meeting with the Lunenburg Business Association to review draft brochures as produced by the Monmouth Juncet Regional Planning Commission.
So that's October 26th?
25th.
25th.
Nope. It is 26th. Hmm. That's weird.
10/26.
Wait, November 26th?
Nope, October.
October, okay.
Nope, Thursday's the 25th.
25th?
Yeah.
Two, Monday, Thursday, Thursday, Thursday. Ah, I just can't, okay, 25. And that was, again, that was here at what time?
Here at 5:00 PM.
Excellent, thank you. Any Board comments or concerns?
No.
Speak now or hold it till the next meeting. Okay.
No, move to adjourn. Sorry.
Second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I didn't want to make the motion, because everyone always-